Well, it is 6:00 PM on August 19th, and I want to welcome you to your City Hall. This is the City of Iowa City formal meeting, and I'm going to call it to order. Roll call, please.
Alter, here.
Burgess, here.
Harmsen.
Here.
Mo.
Here.
Saleh.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Y-line.
Here.
All right, so welcome to everybody that is present and to those that are joining us virtually. We're going to move on to proclamations. Item number two, 2A, is Library Card Sign-Up Month. Whereas libraries foster an informed and engaged public by supporting their freedom to read, explore, and discover; and whereas libraries provide lifelong learning opportunities for all ages, from early literacy, storytimes, to college and career readiness, workforce development, and personal enrichment; and whereas public school and academic libraries each play a unique and complementary role in the educational ecosystem, and a public library card is a powerful tool in every student's backpack, expanding access to books, technology, and support beyond the classroom; and whereas a library card opens the door to creativity and empowers individuals to explore their interests, develop new skills, and connect with their communities; and whereas libraries bridge cultural, economic, and generational valleys by providing supportive spaces where people of all backgrounds gather to learn, share, and grow; and whereas the library serves in partnership with multiple community-driven initiatives, municipal departments, the public libraries of Johnson County, as well as state and national organizations; and whereas libraries develop collections, programs, and outreach that reflect the diverse needs of the communities they serve and work to ensure equitable access for all; and whereas libraries play a critical role in helping people navigate life complexities by offering trusted information, digital access, and guidance on everything from housing and healthcare to civic engagement; and whereas shared library resources support sustainability by reducing waste, conserving resources, and helping patrons save money. Now therefore, I, Bruce Teague, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim September 2025 to be Library Card Sign-Up Month. In Iowa City, Iowa, I encourage all residents to celebrate the power of reading, sign up for a library card, and explore the many resources available through the Iowa City Public Library and the Iowa City Public Library Book Mobile. And accepting this proclamation today is the Library Board President, Robin Anne, and the Iowa City Public Library Collection Services.
On behalf of the Iowa City Public Library, thank you, Mayor Teague, and members of the Iowa City Council. We greatly appreciate your recognition of the importance and power of a public library card. We invite everyone in Iowa City to visit the library or our book mobile to get a library card and explore the world. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to items number three through seven, which is our consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
So moved, Y-line.
Second, alter.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you are virtual, please raise your virtual hand, and I will acknowledge you. See no one in person or online to address the consent agenda? Counsel discussion? Roll call, please.
Harmsen? Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Saleh?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Y-line?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Item number eight is our community comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to speak to the council. During this time, the council will not engage because it has not been properly noticed on the agenda. I wanted to take just a show of hands of anyone that would like to speak on any item that is not on our agenda. Okay. I'm going to grant you three minutes. We do have a sign-up that is right here at the podium. There's also a card that I would encourage people to get in the back at any point where you can fill out your name and drop it in the basket. At this time, I'm going to invite you all up for up to three minutes to speak on items that are not on our agenda. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Isabella Vine. I live here in Iowa City, and I would very much like to speak with you about something I found out. Many of you may remember, I spoke with you about the problem at the shelter house with tent city and all the crime and drug use and everything there. I did some digging. I didn't like what I found. Chrissy Canganelli, who's the director there, last year got a salary of $165,000. This year, she upped it to $185,000. I found out what every other homeless shelter director in Iowa gets, which is between $45,000 and $55,000, give or take a little bit. That is for everyone else in the state of Iowa. Why does Chrissy get more than three times what they get? In New York, and Los Angeles, and large cities, their top salary for homeless shelter directors is $90,000 to $95,000. She's getting double what they're getting. Iowa City is nothing compared to those cities. The people who work there are getting paid, I believe it is a base salary of $90,000. Other employees in other homeless shelters do not even compare to that. They're at poverty levels compared to what Iowa City shelter employees and directors get. And I know I don't have enough time here to go over everything, but I'll be back for every other meeting to finish everything. I believe it was last year, maybe the year before, my year isn't exact here. The shelter house made $3 million profit. They had almost 2,000 people come through the door. They offered help to only 324 of them, yet the audit doesn't state exactly how many people they gave help to. This is theft of government and public funds on the part of Chrissy Canganelli and the staff at the shelter house. I have been going through many, many documents, a lot of which I got off your website here at the city. All of this is proven, this is her salary, and what does she do? There are people that have been living at the shelter for more than two years. Don't tell me she couldn't have used some of that $3 million profit to help some of those people. And you still need to do something about that ghastly tent city, which is wreaking terror all over that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, Dr. Emma Denny. I'm from Iowa City. I would just like to state for the record that our unhoused neighbors deserve to live here. It doesn't matter if they live on the street. They have the same fundamental rights as everyone in this community, rights to safety, rights to a decent standard of living. This week, a truck drove through the encampment in an attempt, it was a car, okay, a pickup truck or something, just a car, whatever. In an attempt, I suppose, to harm and assault citizens of Iowa City simply for living where they do. And I think that is despicable. I think what we need fundamentally is first and foremost to meet these people where they are and give them the aid that they're asking for, whether or not that's patch kits for tents, whether or not that's healthcare, things like that. Secondarily, we need a large-scale investment in meaningful public housing in this city, and including meaningful permanent supportive housing. The only way that you get people off the streets is giving them real, long-lasting resources and making sure that people don't end up homeless in the first place by making sure that there are places they can live, that they can afford, no matter who they are. Thank you.
Thank you. And when you get a chance, will you drop a signature in the back? Perfect, thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Mary Grabett, and I'm from Iowa City. I want to write, I mean, speak on some comments that from the August 5th meeting, especially 11D, the sale of lots to, sale of a lot to the Domestic Violence Intervention Program. There is only six townhouses proposed for those fleeing domestic violence. This amount of housing seems inadequate considering that the homes have no move-out clause. It seems that two level, you know, first, second, condos would be, would make better housing units in place of the six single townhouses. Condos would supply 12 housing units in the space of six townhouses. With the lax gun laws, domestic violence will increase, not decrease. Additional housing will be needed. And like every human service supplied by Iowa City, the other cities in Johnson County will send their victims of domestic violence and abuse and homelessness to Iowa City and the police board replacement. Judging from the angry comments drawn by the state of Iowa's disillusion of police review boards, it is better to fold the present review board into the Civil Rights or Human Rights Commission, whichever works, because when citizens feel abused by the police, they, in most cases, feel that their civil rights have been violated. Washington, DC is a perfect example by Trump's instruction to the National Guard acting as police, policing the city, and disposing of the homeless. And the Gaza resolution, I'm sorry I wasn't here to hit the end of that, but Gaza is a matter of public conscience and consciousness. Because of the political nature of the Gaza genocide, the boycott should be put on the November ballot. We have to stop thinking like Democrats and fight the opposition by any means necessary. However, in the meantime, citizens are free to boycott as a private matter of consciousness. And finally, the bus shelters. Bus shelters are sorely needed because of the ADA and the large disability community in Iowa City. Some agency has been kind enough to supply wooden benches throughout the neighborhood, but this is not enough due to the inclement weather, with climate change. And when we weren't in climate change, we still had the weather. There are bus shelters being warehoused and funds, $100,000 was provided by the pre, a previous administration for bus shelters. As far as I have observed, only one.
Thank you. Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
My name's Alan Ross. I'm from Iowa City. I'm here to address the resolution regarding Israel that was passed. I wrote an email two weeks ago to each and every one of you, which has gone unanswered, so I'm here. I looked at the investments that Iowa City makes online. None of them are in Israel, so this resolution is basically virtue signaling and ineffectual. If you want to do something about boycotting Israel, I suggest you go to your offices, pull out all your flash drives, throw them in the garbage, as they were developed in Israel in 1987. Then, look on each all of your computers, find a sign that says Intel Inside, trash them. Much of the Intel chips are developed or manufactured in Israel. While not all cell phones are made in Israel, the first one was in 1973 by Motorola in their development and research in Israel. Also, when you order a salad, tell them hold the cherry tomatoes, because those two were developed in Israel. Now, you should also go to the University of Iowa, tell them to get rid of the pill cams developed in Israel, also the LNR flexible stents, and the ReWalk exoskeletons. While I know I'm not going to convince you to rescind this resolution, I would like you to pass another one. I would like you to pass a resolution condemning Hamas for the crimes against humanity, the rape, kidnapping, and slaughter of innocent civilians on October 7th, 2023. In doing so, you will join the United Nations, the International Criminal Court, the European Union, and the Arab League. Yes, even the Arab League, countries like Qatar, Egypt, Iraq, Libya, and the United Arab Emirates have condemned Hamas, a terrorist organization. I call upon this council to do the same. Failure to do so will void any claim to the moral high ground and cast doubt on any shade of fairness in wanting protection for all humans. Thank you.
Will you please sign your name in?
It's signed here.
Thank you. Any other individuals who want to speak at this time? Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, my name is Michael Roberts. I'm a resident of Iowa City. I just wanted to thank the counselor, council, for their support of the Gaza resolution and refute the idea that by opposing the genocide in Gaza, we somehow sanction or endorse the violence that Hamas has inflicted on the residents of Israel. It is not an either-or proposition. You can be both against violence by Hamas and both against genocide of the residents of Gaza who are in an open-air concentration camp, starving, disconnected from food, basic utilities, medical supplies, and that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And at this, yep.
Hi, I'm Christine Hayes. I'm an Iowa City resident, and I'm here this evening to provide an update on an incident that occurred near Shelter House property this weekend. Last Friday night, a man intentionally drove into an encampment adjacent to Shelter House, injuring the individuals who were in their tents when the attacks occur. Shelter House staff and first responders worked quickly and effectively, and though none of the injuries were critical, four people went to the hospital. Everyone, the folks in nearby tents, the staff who responded, the neighbors, the entire Shelter House team is profoundly shaken. Shelter House is offering counseling resources to all staff, which is our practice after traumatic events. The victim's status as individuals experiencing unsheltered homelessness amplifies the risk to their safety, but sleeping outside is never truly safe. You can be certain these people would not have had their homes or apartment buildings driven into. The fact that they are sleeping outdoors makes them vulnerable in every way, to natural forces like extreme weather, to social stigma, and to human aggression. All victims have since been released from the hospital and discharged to homelessness. We continue to provide trauma-informed care and street outreach services as we work towards helping these individuals and dozens more like them to find safe, secure housing they can afford. Shelter House will remain in communication as we learn more information. Thank you.
Thank you. And I wanted to see if there's anyone else that had raised their hand or wanted to speak during this time.
Hello there, my name is Ria LaFaire. I'm a recent Iowa City resident. Next month will actually be my first year here. I moved in and got married with my lovely wife, who's with me right now, and I came from Kansas City. So I'm going to apologize to all of you in advance. My issue is not nearly the same thing. It was just a conversation I was having while walking the lovely city. I love it here, and there was just something I thought of, because my wife always prides this town on being walkable. And I'm not used to that, because I came from Kansas City, where everyone has a parking lot, and you are lucky to not get run over going from intersection to intersection. But I always thought it was really strange with this many parking meters and everything that we have here that we use this automated system that we do with the cards that sometimes you just sit there praying it worked. Is there ever been a consideration that you all might have considered with like QR codes or like a website or something, just for the generation that's more on their phones? It's just something I thought that might be helpful and just useful to all of you, and that's all I got for this topic, so.
Thank you. I'll invite you to sign your name right there. Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Anyone else? I wanted to make sure I especially acknowledge anybody that raised their hand. See no one else. Thanks to everyone that came forth. We are going to move on to item number nine, which is Planning and Zoning Matters, 9A, Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Resolution to amend the Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map for Office, Research, Development Center to General Commercial, Mixed Use, and Public-Privet Open Space for approximately 57 acres of land located south of I-80 and east of North Dodge Street. And I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sitzman, Neighborhood and Development Services. As you introduce this agenda item, it's the first of three agenda items pertaining to roughly the same area. This first agenda item is a comp plan amendment, and there are two rezonings within the area of the comp plan amendment that we're discussing tonight. In the past, there's been a rezoning that was done last November. That rezoning was for the property around the central circle of the ACT campus. This re, a comp plan amendment and the rezonings that follow are for the area highlighted in the white outline. This spring, the property changed ownership. The new owner, Iceberg Development Group LLC, is requesting this amendment for future redevelopment of the campus. They're working with Shive Hattery to prepare, as I said, three applications. The first one is this comp plan amendment. The comp plan amendment would request the future land use map designation as appropriate development for this area to be two different items shown here, well, three actually, shown here, red, yellow, and green. The northern one would be a mixed-use designation. The yellow one would be, I'm sorry, the yellow one would be a mixed-use. The red one would be general commercial, and the green would be open space. Just want to point out that these are comp plan map designations are not zoning districts yet, so as we talk through this application, those are just general terms. They could encompass several different kinds of zoning districts. The zoning districts are designated through a separate application. So when we review comp plan amendments, what we look at are two criteria. First, is there a change in circumstances or additional information that's come to light since the comp plan was amended to warrant changing a map in the comp plan? And also, is whatever's being proposed compatible with other policies or provisions in the comp plan? Certainly, circumstances have changed. This entire, almost 400-acre campus is sold. It's no longer being used as it was by ACT. It's expected to redevelop in the future, and we've seen some parts of that begin already. The comp plan, when it was adopted in 2013, simply worked around the fact that this was already ACT's campus, and the designation on the map at that time simply reflected the existing use. And we know a lot of things have changed about office, not just ACT, but office, reuse of this office campus is probably unlikely, therefore, the sale to another developer. Office uses in general have moved to other places, or people are doing remote work in ways that we didn't expect, probably back in 2013, even when we were doing comp plan work in this area. The campus firmly had over 1,000 employees, averaging about 900 people a day as employees. That's dwindled quite a bit. There are very few people actually coming to this office use at this time. So with the reduction in workforce from 1,000 to just under 100, and the market demand changes due to remote work post-pandemic, conditions have certainly significantly changed since the adoption of the comprehensive plan. The proposed amendment is compatible with the policies of the comp plan. Even when it was adopted in 2013, there was an acknowledgement that this was a large campus even for the use at the time in its prime, and that potentially reuse of this land would certainly be appropriate. Those other uses included such things as residential, commercial recreation, warehousing, office as well. So there are policies in our comprehensive plan in addition to the plan map that would map out uses. And there are several policies that are about land use and housing that certainly support this comp plan amendment as well. So a little background on ACT campus. Shown in blue is this amendment that we're considering at this time. This land was annexed quite some time ago. It does have a district plan that's relevant to it, but again, as I said, it acknowledged that it was probably an overuse of office space at the time. And then to just kind of map out as development occurs, there'll need to be rezoning steps as well as planning, site plan, and building permits. So there was a Good Neighbor Meeting held in June, and based on our view of the relevant code, criteria, staff did recommend approval of the amendment. At their July 16th meeting, by a vote of 5-0, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and did recommend approval. I'm happy to answer questions about the comp plan amendment.
I have actually just a comment, but I don't know if I'm allowed to say it. It's just a point of clarification, actually, about the number of employees at ACT. Am I allowed to make that?
There will be some council discussion, so unless you think it would spur additional questions from your fellow counselors.
I'll leave it there.
Okay.
Just curious about the Good Neighbor Meeting, if there was any concerns that were raised that you can recall.
It was, you might ask the applicant that. I did not attend that meeting. That was summarized in the packet. I believe it was a fairly low turnout, though, because there's just not a lot of immediate adjacent neighbors in this neighborhood, so it may have been one of those meetings that didn't garner a lot of attention.
Great, thank you.
I remember there being some traffic concerns just because of like the weird, just kind of like the weird roads that are over there. People wanting to make sure that they'd still be able to get where they need to be going. But I also saw in the, in the document that based on what was said, staff didn't make any recommendations for changing anything, so.
So I will just say, the rezoning applications that follow this, we did have a traffic study as part of those rezonings to address any necessary offsite improvements because of redevelopment potential. That would be where we would talk about that.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic, if you're online? Oh, welcome to the developer, yes. Are you represented as a developer?
Yes, Steve Long, part of the development team. We're also with me are members of Shive Hattery and Shoemaker-Holland, engineers and architects. We're excited to transform and reinvigorate this part of Iowa City. We're only focusing on the western portion now because, as Danielle mentioned, the eastern portion is not part of the comprehensive plan process. We're working with the community and staff as they update the comprehensive plan. So that'll be the next couple of years. You're going to see a lot of me the next few years. You know, my background and my partner's background's affordable housing, and we were recently awarded 44 units of tax credit housing for 55-plus, nine single-family homes and a building with 35 two-bedrooms. So that'll be starting this spring. Other than that, I'm here for questions from the community or yourselves.
If you can talk a little bit about the Good Neighbor Meeting, how many people attend? Is it an issue? And how many also like neighbors surrounding the area who care about this?
Yes. This is going back a couple of months, so may rely on one of the engineers, if I don't remember correctly. As Counselor Y-line mentioned, traffic was brought up. I don't remember the number of people in attendance. I think it was maybe 15 to 18. A number of people from Oaknell East, which is just to the south of us. And the traffic concerns, as the traffic study addressed, will be allevied. We're actually adding a road to connect up to Dodge Street that used to be there until 2002, and the city is putting a stoplight at that intersection in the spring. Our construction for that road will probably be soon after that. So that was the biggest concern. In the traffic study, there is some discussion of, it's confusing, but North Dubuque Road by the fire station, you know, that's, there's some backups, and the city staff has some solutions for that, particularly by the Scooter's Coffee Shop.
It looks like there was 20 that attended on that June 10th evening, largely focused on traffic in terms of the concerns. There was a comment about, concern about potential tree removal that of course comes up in subsequent rezonings and site plan analysis. There are also several positive comments received that are noted in there, including the street connectivity and the diversity of housing that was talked about at the meeting. But that summary is in the packet. You just have to scroll all the way through to the end of this item.
Thanks.
And I remember when we walked around the ACT campus when we were discussing this, I don't know if this is particular, if it falls under the western side of this area that we're talking about, but you said that there were no plans on, in any major way affecting the natural areas back there because you wanted to retain it for the potential developments that might go there as a quality of life thing and just because it's cool. Right? Yeah.
Probably my exact words. No, we considered an asset. And if you look at the aerial maps, when ACT purchased the land, a lot of that land was cropland, farmland, and they've let it develop into a mature woodland and spent a lot of time and money and using experts to create the woodlands and the prairie. So we fully intend to maintain the woodlands and the pond and we've started, you know, we started having facilities crew mow the paths again and cut back the trees and really open it up to the public. We encourage the public to come explore this mysterious place for many years that was private and soon will be more public. If you work at ACT, you probably see me out there a lot with my dogs. Feel free to explore.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand and I'll acknowledge you. Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
Still moved, Mo.
Second, Harmsen.
All right, council discussion.
This is just, it's a small point, but not a small point. And it's just a clarification within the packet as well as during the presentation. It's noted that at one time ACT had 1,200 people in very large square footage, over 350 square feet, 1,000 square feet. But then it states that there are 75 employees now. That's on site. We still have a company of over 700 people, so it's just that most of it is that people are able to work from home. So I just wanted to make that point because otherwise it looked like ACT is literally withering on the vine, so just had to say it.
I'm excited to see what's next. I can't wait to see this, but has a complaint changed? It makes sense.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mo?
Yes.
Sella?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Wyline?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Nine B, rezoning North Dubuque Road, ordinance conditionally rezoned in approximately 22.5 acres of property located east of North Scott Boulevard along North Dubuque Road from rural residential zone, low density, single family residential zone, RS5 with a planned development overlay, research development park zone, and interim development, single family residential zone to mixed use zone. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome again Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the first of the two rezonings I mentioned. It's for the southwestern 22 acres of land highlighted here in the white outline. It was just approved as part of that past resolution to be designated as mixed use in the future land use plan map. This shows the mix of zoning districts out in the subject property and the area around it today. There are, this 22 acres has a mix of multiple zoning district designations across it, everything from rural residential to single family residential, another kind of single family residential with an overlay, to that research development park, and then an interim zoning designation as well. So this would remove all of those zoning designations and replace it with one mixed use designation. The mixed use zone allows for a variety of residential and non-residential uses. It's intended to be a mix of those uses and designs so that those things coexist successfully. It would allow multifamily, assisted group living, single family duplex, office, retail, and eating establishments as an example. So for with a simple rezoning like this, we have two criteria that we review. First, consistency with the complaint and compatibility with the neighborhood. So consistency with the complaint, certainly that makes sense. We've just amended the map, so it is consistent with that. There are also land use goals and strategies as well as housing goals and strategies that redevelopment of this area would be supported even if the map did not. So encouraging compact development, planning for commercial development, and encouraging a diversity of housing options. It's surrounded by a variety of land uses already. The neighborhood around it, like I should, the zoning map had a variety of uses in it. So considering the uses that are allowed within the mixed use zone and the range of uses that are currently surrounding the subject property, staff finds that within the proposed conditions, which I'll talk about at the end, that the proposed rezoning would be compatible with the existing neighborhood. Those conditions were crafted to ensure the compatibility with the neighborhood. There is some infrastructure that we've already started talking about in the previous application with interest in traffic and then there are some also sanitary sewer needs that need to be understood. So the subject property is accessed, accessed from the North Dubuque Road, which until now has been mostly functioning as a side or secondary access point to the campus. Like there was mentioned, there was another access on North Dubuque Street at one point. This rezoning and the subsequent redevelopment will make this North Dubuque Road more of a primary route. Therefore, as part of the rezoning, staff requested a traffic study to investigate what the impact of that would be on the surrounding street network and to identify any development related improvements that need to be made and include them in this rezoning. The city did determine that the existing lane configuration and stops controls on Dodge Street and ACT Circle Lane will not provide an acceptable level of service. Level of service is one of those terms from transportation planning through the horizon of time that they look at when they do a traffic study, which is quite far into the future, 2047, which is considered the build out or design year scenario. So looking at not just day one, but how much traffic might grow kind of naturally over the large span of time and how that would affect that intersection. So therefore, the proposed lane configuration and signalized control presented as part of that traffic study was recommended. The study determined that the existing lane configuration on North Scott Boulevard and North Dubuque Street would also suffer some level of surface concerns to the 2047 horizon. However, that level of surface issue wasn't really attributable to this development, but more of kind of background rise in traffic and limited really to the Scooters Coffee access. So it's, that's anticipated to arise regardless of this, whether this development is built or not. Additionally, that level of service concern was only for a very short period of time, 30 to 45 minutes during the morning peak hour. So the city's engineers reviewed that traffic study and they were satisfied with the results and the improvements identified in them. Since this area's never been platted, there's also not a robust street network. So staff does recommend a condition to ensure that that street network is built out as this development occurs. So the condition for plating and the subdivision process to be followed is part of staff's recommendations. We're also recommending that before a final plat is approved, the owners submit construction drawings demonstrating that North Dubuque Road between North Scott and ACT Drive meets the city's standards for the construction of the street. There's some existing streets out on the ground that need to be verified as being satisfactory for becoming public city streets and having the type of traffic on it that we anticipate. So those drawings would need to be submitted and reviewed. Also then, there's some information that staff needed to know about the sanitary sewer network in this area and has requested a flow study to satisfy that. So again, looking at next steps for this campus area, this application is the blue highlight for the rezoning of that 22.5 acres. As I mentioned, the condition would be for prelim and final plating eventually, which would be coming back to you, and then site plan and building permits. So based on a review of the relevant code, staff recommended approval with five conditions. Those conditions include that the property go through the subdivision process to ensure all of the street network and is anticipated and built out so that connected neighborhood can be anticipated. Also that construction drawings demonstrating North Dubuque Road between North Scott Boulevard and ACT meets city standards, that sewer flow study that I mentioned. Also that any commercial use that abouts residential zones include a landscape buffer strip and that the commercial development be outfitted with light fixtures that ensure full cutoff of life, of light, special light fixtures. So at their meeting on July 16th, 2025, by a vote of five to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's recommendation and are forwarding it to you tonight with those five conditions. I'm happy to answer questions.
Danielle, if any of the privately developed infrastructure doesn't meet city standards, at what point is that required? At plating or actually at permitting?
It's sort of unusual to already have infrastructure in the ground that's being inherited as part of development. So we've had to kind of negotiate when and who gets impacted by that. So if it's not up to city standards, it doesn't get torn out, but you already have residents nearby. Ideally, all of it's developed to city standards and we don't accept responsibility for it until it is. So this would be ensuring that we know the status of what's out there before we're in a bind to accept it.
Okay. And you talked about sanitary sewer. Did you study also storm sewer and stormwater management on that area?
So stormwater management's required. That's more easy to do on site. Sanitary's got to go offsite, it's got to drain down to the sewer plant. We know it can be done, we just don't know whether it needs to be upsized or not. So the flow study would be determining for sanitary, how much of that needs to be upsized.
Okay. And then as far as the roads, is what we see here is what we should expect? Or is there an opportunity for the applicant to change the configurations of any of the roads after this rezoning?
I would say this is not what you should expect. What you see at preliminary plat is what you should expect.
That's when we'll see the final road configuration.
That's when we start talking about how big a block can be before it needs to have other intersections. Yeah, exactly.
And you would permit that to be platted before there are any of the adjacent areas rezoned or even changed in the complaint from IP to more mixed use or more housing?
It depends on what the applicant chooses to develop. They certainly have to plan their street network far enough out that we can anticipate it's going to connect to the next thing. That makes sense.
And this is a single person, so they would be responsible if they undersize the road for future rezonings?
I'm not sure I understand your question, so.
I guess there's a large portion here that we keep as IP and we don't know what it is. And I totally understand there's a lot of land to get your arms around. I just don't know what kind of assurances a city gets that the infrastructure in place will make in the future.
So we actually can, so we can tell the applicant, okay, you're proposing a preliminary plat for this area, but we can't, we need to see a larger area to know that things will connect. So we can tell them that's not a rational choice to stop your prelim plat here. We need a larger area to at least get the preliminary plat schematically laid out. They don't have to necessarily final plat and build all of those things until they go to do each phase.
Okay, thank you.
When the study was done, you know, and you mentioned specifically Scooters, right? Was there also, I'm assuming that there was accounting for Station House Four that's right there and sort of like both their current need, but then as, you know, you build it out to 2047, presumably the city itself is bigger and therefore they might need to be covering more calls or going to more. I'm just wondering, was the station house taken into account not just now, but also sort of thinking as the city grows, potentially and likely that need would be also taken into account?
We absolutely knew there was a fire station there and that they had unique needs. And a fire station's only going to serve a certain area around it. Like as the city grows, there'll be more fire stations because they want their response time to be, right? Those things are geographically tied. But yeah, that was certainly part of the consideration is.
I mean, it's tight as it is.
They have signal priority and things that they can control from the fire station immediately around them, but yeah, the level of service is important.
Yeah, yeah. No, and of cour, and I phrased it poorly. It's like, yes, figured you kind of knew.
I had, just because this is the first time until this that I heard about the LOS, level of service. Was I right in seeing that that's not going to be renewed until 2047?
So level of service is like a grade in school, A, B, C, D, E, F. You might not want to take a C home to your parents, but in traffic engineering, C is fine. We don't build roads for them to be empty. So there's a certain level of service that you can expect a road to have cars on it and that's perfectly acceptable. When it gets down to the point though where those cars can't flow through the intersection, no matter how many times you change the signal timing, you still have like backups and people, you know, stuck in the intersection trying to make left turns. That's when there's a basically a level service that's unacceptable, D, E, F kind of situation. So the traffic engineers will take a look and kind of give a grade and they'll give that grade kind of anticipating growth of traffic kind of normally over that long period of time. And so anticipating that an improvement needs to be made so that you don't end up with an intersection that doesn't function is the purpose of the level of service.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to, I was definitely misunderstanding it because I thought that that meant that we are assuming that there's only going to be the scooters there until 2047, which I, you know, that doesn't make any sense to me. So I just, you know, just wanted to clarify. I would also like to talk about what is currently on the, I don't know how else to put it, the big plot of land to south of Dubuque on the map. What is currently there right now? Do you know what that building is?
The applicant may be able to tell you what that is, that in the purple, you're just talking about that kind of purple area that says RDP right there on that, on that drawing in the center of the 22 acres.
Yes.
It has an address, but I can't see it on this map. The applicant might be able to tell you what that use currently is. It probably was an ACT campus building of some sort.
Going south.
The purple with the RDP RS5, it's a former single family house. So ACT bought that. It was a single family house that ACT bought maybe seven, eight years ago.
That's what I thought. And one thing, I don't know if this is the proper place to discuss this, but something that comes to mind when we're talking about rezoning these to these mixed use zones, like this is a lot of land that, and it just comes down to what the developer wants to do with this huge piece of land when we are trying to utilize land for housing and other things that the community might need. So where this is one single family home, like this could be dozens and dozens of units that could potentially fit some definition of infill. And so I was, I don't know, I was just, the concept of minimum density requirements comes to mind. I don't think that we have any minimum density requirements on our code, do we?
No, we do not.
We do not? Okay. Just wanted to ask that, thank you.
Just to put it in perspective, this is 22 acres out of 400. When we start talking about the second rezoning application, that's another 33 acres. So in total tonight, we're only talking about 55 acres out of 400. So there's a lot of development potential still to be discussed and rezoned for the property that is part of the former campus.
For sure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone want to address this topic? Seeing, oh, welcome.
Steve Long again, if anybody has any questions. But I do want to give, we are fortunate that ACT has been there for 60-plus years. The quality of construction, the quality of the roads that were constructed, to best of our knowledge, I mean, Shive Hattery's verifying, but meet city standards. So I just wanted to give a big thank you to ACT for building high quality buildings and infrastructure. And we do intend to have, follow the city goals and have a mix of uses and a higher density. We're going to create walkable neighborhoods and the next item is the commercial area. We want to create housing that you can walk to this commercial area, so.
Okay. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Before we close this, just wanted to get a look at the council to see if they're inclined to vote with P and Z.
Yes.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration, please?
Still moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Sella?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Wyline?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
south of I-80. Ordnance conditionally rezoned in approximately 33.6 acres of property located east of North Dodge Street and south of I-80 from office research park zone to commercial, to community commercial zone. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Danielle again.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is the 33 acres that I just mentioned. It's also subject to that comp plan amendment that we just started the evening with. This is a northwestern, I'd say, 33 acres of land. That's formerly the ACT campus of 400 acres and designated on the future land use map as general commercial. It has a simpler current zoning. It's just office research park and it would be going to community commercial CC2. CC2 allows for a variety of commercial uses, such as restaurants, retail and office. Some more intensive commercial uses allowed, which is really appropriate next to the Highway One alignment there. We use the same two review criteria, consistency with the comprehensive plan. So with that plan amendment, we are consistent there. There are also land use economic and transportation goals and strategies in the comprehensive plan that are in alignment with this type of rezoning, encouraging compact and efficient development, commercial development in a node rather than a strip alignment, diversity of potential housing options, also kind of that reinvestment in property tax base and commercial activity. And then for transportation, accommodating all modes of transportation, kind of highlighting the, putting the traffic for vehicles on the highway system into the development rather than through local streets and designing the streets to be complete streets, which we talk a little bit about sidewalk extension in this application. As far as compatibility with the existing neighborhood, it's a portion of the campus. Again, it's some conditions placed by staff, recommended by staff to ensure compatibility. And considering the vacant undeveloped land around this portion of the site and the uses that are allowed within the proposed zone, staff does find that the proposed, with the proposed condition, that the proposed rezoning would be compatible with the neighborhood. Again, traffic study was completed because of this development potential here, especially off the highway. The existing lane configuration and stop control on North Dodge Street and ACT Circle would not provide the acceptable level of surface. So there's improvements that are being included as part of the rezoning for the developer to accomplish. And the city does also have a project in the area to connect the street network, but the developer would be responsible for the fourth leg of that four-leg intersection to provide access into the subject property. And then a dedicated northbound right turn lane and southbound left turn lane would be required of the development to ensure traffic flow does work. The city engineer again reviewed the traffic study and will be doing our part of the project at the same time or close to when they're doing theirs. Again, there's a sewer flow study that we wanted to ensure and then a condition for sidewalk installation. There's some missing gaps in sidewalks. So this is that second rezoning shown in the next steps. Again, the prelim and final plats would be required for this land and then site plan and building permits. So based on a review of the relevant code criteria, staff did recommend this to the P and Z with seven conditions. So the plating condition that I talked about before, this sewer flow study condition, and then landscape buffer strips for any commercial development that that is adjacent to residential. And that landscape plan would be reviewed by the city forester. Also an installation of a 10-foot wide sidewalk on the eastern southern portion of the North Dodge Street and then a southbound left turn lane and northbound right turn lane on North Dodge Street at ACT Circle to be designed and installed. The fourth leg of that intersection at ACT Circle and North Dodge Street. And then if they would, to propose an additional and get permission from the state DOT for an additional access point on North Dodge Street to limit that North Dodge Street to only a right-in, right-out turning movement. So at their meeting on July 16th, by a vote of five to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and recommended approval with those seven proposed conditions. Happy to answer questions.
Can you go to the math?
On the north, the condition to add, if we are, if they're permitted to add a stoplight
or ingress egress onto North Dodge, is that condition four? Sorry, I'm making you flip.
It was one of the later conditions. Yes.
Would that also allow people to cross that street at that location to get to that bike path that crosses the interstate? Is that the kind of thing that we could expect to see at plating?
So the intersection on this map at ACT Circle would be a full intersection where a pedestrian could cross the street from the south side of North Dodge to the north side of North Dodge. But that right-in, right-out intersection, as we've seen it proposed, would be farther northeast of that and it would just be for cars, for a car to pull into the commercial area and pull out of the commercial area.
It's, yeah. No, it's not my job to design it, but it'd be really great if there was a way to cross.
The crossing would be at ACT Circle.
Okay.
Just watch out.
All right. Here are no more questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Daniel Crawford and I'm from Iowa City. I have a question for clarification from the city engineer. The statement about compatibility with existing neighborhood leaves me wondering, since this is largely developing a new area ex Nihilo out of nothing, what criteria you use for determining the neighborhood, the neighborhood for compatibility with? Just a question.
Yep. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. And council could ask that during our deliberations. Yes. Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? Seeing no one else, online or in person. Before I close the public hearing, is council inclined to vote with P and Z? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration, please?
So moved. Harmsen. Second. Mo.
Counsel discussion.
I was wondering if we could get some clarification for the public commenter there regarding the process or the criteria that they were asking about. Thank you.
So that's a fairly standard and generic criteria. It can be a lot of things, a lot of different people. So there's not necessarily like a checklist that I could give you that says that's what we look at. But we look at the surrounding conditions and we kind of inventory what that is. In the last application, like I said, there was a multitude of zonings and a multitude of kind of development around that, that southern area of land, this northern one. You can kind of just see on a map, other than the ACT link west buildings, it's largely kind of an access road parallel to North Dodge Street, some of those natural areas that came up in discussion earlier, and not a lot of other development besides ACT itself. So compatible with the existing neighborhood is kind of a very proximal look, look right immediately around it. We look at larger neighborhoods considerations. We look at a district plan, if the district plan has any recommendations in it. So this area does have a district plan. The district plan is very generic because it just anticipated this would be office park. And it said, you know, if, if and when it's not office park, it could certainly be more residential. It could be hotels. It could be commercial redevelopment. So that's what staff would look at. We'd look at what's on the ground now, what the vision in the comp plan was and make a recommendation from there.
Thank you.
Just a quick follow-up question, Danielle. I think you mentioned the proximity to Highway One. Is the proximity to the interstate and like what's on the other parts of the interchange? Does that play into the compatibility analysis?
I mean, certainly the street network does. Having a major highway and/or several arterials like this particular neighborhood has is part of its character in a way. It's got a good access to those highway, highways and as well as to I-80. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other comments by counsel? Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sella.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero, nine D, rezoning 2510 North Dodge Street. Ordnance rezoned in approximately 37.9 acres of land located at 2510 North Dodge Street from a research and development park zone to intensive commercial zone. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Danielle again.
Thank you. The subject property here is the former Pearson site. It's been vacant for nearly five years. The new ownership, the Geifman Group out of the Quad Cities, recently purchased the property and they're looking to repurpose the existing buildings into a variety of land uses, the area shown here in the white highlight. Some of those uses that seek to occupy the space, specifically indoor commercial rec are not allowed under the current zoning. So this rezoning would be to allow what they are requesting to reoccupy the building with. Shows that zoning exhibit of what's currently zoned around it, the current zoning of that 37, 38 acres as research development park and the proposed rezoning to intensive commercial. A lot of the uses in RDP, like hotel, manufacturing, warehouse, wholesale, daycare would be allowed currently. It's really the indoor commercial recreation and some of those other kind of more personable services like sales and eating and drinking establishments that need to, that the rezoning would need to happen in order to allow. Same two review criteria, the comp plan and consistency with the neighborhood. In this case, the comp plan describes the area as an employment center for a variety of uses, especially those benefiting from close interstate access. And this is a quote out of the comprehensive plan, kind of describing in 2013, I believe it was, what the character of the neighborhood was. Again, this is another situation where the comp plan just kind of memorialized what was already there. I don't think people were anticipating this much change in the office market. So again, things have significantly changed in that market. This rezoning would allow for redevelopment of this property, not necessarily removal of buildings, but revitalizing them and benefiting the neighborhood around it by that increased activity. It is consistent with land use and economic goals and strategies, again, avoiding strip development, really concentrating commercial in nodes. So this entire side of North I-80 has a couple of nodes of commercial already located there. And like I said, revitalization and diversification of uses in the economic realm. As far as compatibility with the existing neighborhood, again, looking at that, what's immediately adjacent, what's anticipated to development, to develop. The land to the west is also zone CI1, so this would be very compatible as a zoning district with that designation. And again, it's very closely located to the I-80 interchange, particularly important, I guess, if you're coming in for sports events with your kiddos. Shows the next steps for this, a little bit of the background of this property going back to the 1970s when it was Westinghouse, the comp plan in 2013, a former rezoning that happened in 2014, and then this rezoning tonight. If there were to be any additional development on the site proposed, there would be additional steps to review that. So based on a review of the relevant criteria, staff did recommend approval with no conditions on this one. And at their meeting on, in July, again, the P and Z recommended also for this rezoning. Happy to answer questions.
Danielle, you just said that if there was going to be additional development, there would be additional steps. So I think you referenced reuse of the buildings that are existing. So the uses that were mentioned, like in the planning and zoning minutes, are those, is that what we sort of expect will all fit in those buildings?
We've seen some concepts from the new owners. I think they're taking it one step at a time, but are they always, it's always good to think ahead. The first step for them really is reuse of the existing buildings. Then they've been exploring how much of their site that's currently just parking for a large employer. Maybe they don't need that much parking and maybe some of those parking lots could become pad sites for other kinds of buildings surrounding this. But they've not actually applied for any kind of site plan review of something like that. If they were to do that, we'd go through the site plan process for those kinds of changes.
Is there anything about Moss Road that impacts this rezoning? I just know there was, the development had to stop at the western edge of that, as I understand it historically. Do you know?
So Moss Ridge does have a long history. The city applied for a rise grant to the state for construction of Moss Ridge as an arterial to facilitate development to the west of this property. It's already in place. It serves this property. It doesn't really impact it at this point. It may have in the past.
Thank you.
Are there any specific, what's the word, maybe prospective tenants that are already being talked about or?
That'd be a great question for the developer. If you've been reading in the news, they've already kind of announced who they are talking to and what they'd like to do, but it doesn't really factor into the rezoning.
It does not.
Other than in generic terms of, are you a restaurant or are you a sports provider?
Because I was seeing something that I think might come up as conversation later in regards to this, is that one of the pros, one of the hypothetical or prospective tenants being a data, a data center? So.
There's an existing data center on site and I think the intention is to reuse it. And that's a very use-specific build. And so turning that into something else probably doesn't make a lot of sense. Our anticipation is that data center would remain a data center if another houser of data needs it.
Thank you.
I just want to ask, it's simple because I'm reading this through, but I just want confirmation that daycare is a provisional use in CA1.
Right.
Or CI1, right?
It was a provisional use, I believe, in the current zoning designation too.
Oh, okay.
So that's another one of those. There's lots of ways to have a mix of uses. It's just some uses need a specific zone. And in this case, it's the indoor rec.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Oh, I'll bring up the developer first. Yes. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Mark Siebold. I'm a principal architect. With Chia Patterson, I'm representing the Geifman Group for this rezoning. I think he was, and Danielle, good job. I think we were very happy working with city staff as we were talking about, you know, what to rezone this, what the new rezoning for this property could be with some of the different potential tenant users that are very interested in moving into the site. I think in general, you know, it's a huge facility that had been marketed to like a single user. And once the Geifman Group bought it and started to visualize, oh, we can divide this up into multiple users and get a lot more energy on the site. And like Danielle said, possibly use some of the additional parking spaces to do some outlots for some future residential. So all of that is kind of playing into this rezoning for intensive commercial. Is there any questions you have for me?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Now I'm going to open it up to the public. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel, are you inclined? Oh, welcome. Sorry. Yes, welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
I'm Nikita McNamee. I'm from Iowa City, Iowa. I'm also a recent resident. I just was wondering in regards to the data center, I just wanted a clarification on like who would own the data center? Like what company was planning on using that? That's kind of it.
Yep. And the council, thank you. Yep. All right. Anyone else like to address this topic? And that from the public?
I have clarification.
So we'll, the council will do it during their deliberations.
Okay.
But thank you. Yes. So the council, are you coming as a public speaker?
As a developer.
Yeah. So once the development team have come forth, then we pause, then it's the community comment, then it's the council, and the council can then bring you back up. All right. Thank you. Steve came out of order and he was quick about it. All right. Seeing no one else from the public, I wanted to address this topic. Counsel, are you all inclined to vote with P and Z?
Yes.
All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. Could I get a motion to get first consideration?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Moved by Sally, seconded by Alter. All right. Counsel discussion.
Go ahead. I was going to say, there was a clarification. I was just going to invite back up probably for the same, probably going to have the same question you have, I guess.
Yes.
No, that'd be good.
No, welcome.
Thank you. I think clarification, I may have said residential development. I meant additional commercial development on the site as far as outlots. And then it would be a private data center. That would be housing data for any variety of private clients. It's not like Google or somebody coming in here. It's not a large scale. It's more of a boutique data center. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good to know.
Here are no other comments from counsel. Roll call, please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sella.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero, nine E. Zoning code text amendment, neighborhood open space. Ordnance amendment in Title 14, zoning code in Title 15, land subdivision Zoning code text amendment, neighborhood open space, ordinance amendment in Title 14, zoning code in Title 15, land subdivision to update the neighborhood open space requirements. I'm going to open the public hearing, and welcome again, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a text amendment, so this would be words in our zoning code changing, and they are related to the neighborhood open space requirements that we currently have. So the proposed ordinance we're discussing is an amendment to that neighborhood open space requirement. It was initially adopted in 1994. The neighborhood open space dedication is a requirement that requires developers to set aside land for parks or pay a fee in lieu of land dedicated to be used by the city to acquire and develop park facilities. This requirement ensures that those that are responsible for creating the need for new parks cover the costs of them rather than existing residents footing that bill. Although certainly, these are for the types of parks that serve those neighborhoods, not large regional parks. So the city does still make investment in parkland beyond what we might capture either as land or fee in lieu. The current formula that we use to calculate the required neighborhood open space dedication is based on acres of undeveloped property, the maximum dwelling units allowed per undeveloped acre in that zone, and then a percentage of development, a kind of an estimated average that was developed in 1994 for average density per dwelling unit, per unit, based on the most recent census. And then a standard of what, kind of a level of service for parks, as you will, a standard of three per 1,000, which is the community standard of three acres of neighborhood park space per 1,000 people. So as you can see from that, that's based on density. We've had several zoning code updates since 1994 that have tinkered, either tinkered with density in some of our base zones, or completely blown the lid off zoning density and created form-based code districts, for example, which don't tie directly to density. And then we've also seen infill projects that have suffered, kind of trying to fit a square peg in a round hole, if you will, for this particular formula. So the main issue is that the current formula is based on maximum density, and that's causing problems in a wide variety of development, redevelopment scenarios. So it was time to address that. It does certainly create a burden for those small infill projects. Like I mentioned, the form-based code isn't based on density, so there's not even a number to grab. And then, as in our residential zones, we've recently changed, had code change amendments allowing duplexes in more areas than what was probably anticipated in 1994. So the goal of the update is to remove density from the calculation, adopt a formula that works for all of our current zoning districts, and adopt a formula that balances the city's current budget and goals with a more reasonable approach for developers and subdivisions. We use the consistency with the comprehensive plan to write this kind of code change. And then, looking at the comprehensive plan, it does include a vision statement to support the development of parks and open space to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And the goals and strategies include working proactively to ensure adequate parks and open space are provided to serve new and existing neighborhoods. So this updated neighborhood open space requirement that is proposed tonight will ensure that the city continues to be able to do this. There are four main sections of the proposed changes, the applicability and procedures, the formula itself, a dedication cap, and then the map that goes with this. So in regarding applicability and procedures, the current ordinance applies to neighborhood open space requirements to residential subdivisions, commercial subdivisions containing residential, and planned developments. The proposed amendment clarifies that the process to do this should be at the prelim plat stage. A preliminary plat process includes public hearings and review by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. And this change recognizes that major developments, including most planned developments, already go through a preliminary plating process. And that's the time at which infrastructure unit layout is determined and making the appropriate point to kind of assess open space needs. It also exempts smaller projects that only require a final plat, as these are typically follow-ups to a process that's already happened with a prelim plat. So they've already kind of anticipated neighborhood open space as part of a previous development. So this update improves the clarity, avoids duplication, and ensures the requirement aligns with the scale and timing of the development. Moving on to the formula, don't be afraid of this math, it's actually pretty easy. The city's ordinance was compared, we kind of researched broadly and compared ourselves to 18 other jurisdictions that require neighborhood open space. And we developed this formula. I'll show you at the end how we kind of proofed it. But the formula was selected based on its alignment with this update's goals, conformance with best practices, as we kind of reviewed the research and how easy it would be for us to apply it. The formula consists of number of units times the number of persons per dwelling unit, and we use the census for that information, and keeping that three per 1,000 standard or level of service. Because the city's zoning districts vary significantly, so four makes codes, single-family zones, a wide variety of zoning tools at play in our city, and how and when unit counts are established in those different kinds of zoning situations, the new formula has flexible methods for estimating those unit numbers. And that's done, as I said again, at the time of prelim plat. So this table shows you a couple of all the anticipated examples of when we'd have to figure out that unit count. And it's different for, say, a single-family residential neighborhood that's basically a conventional zone, we're just going to use lot sizes in that instance. With multifamily residential and commercial, for those residential uses, for every planted lot, maximum dwelling units per developed acre are divided by a number. So this, again, don't be afraid of this number, this is actually much simpler than what we've been doing. But it's basically based on unit count, and then that modifier that was a carryover of 0.65% from the previous formula. In the riverfront crossings, we're going to actually be able to, there's flexibility in mixed-use configurations are very common in those situations. So applicants actually provide their estimated unit count. So these are redevelopment projects where they come to us with a unit count already estimated, so we're not trying to guess. They're coming to us with a site plan, it's got the number of units on it, it's very easy to calculate. In form-based code zones, we'll again have a very simple unit tally, because there's an additional step in a form-based neighborhood development, it's called a neighborhood plan. So again, that's like, almost like a site plan. They'll be showing us the exact housing types and layouts, and so we won't have to estimate it on land area, we'll know exactly what they've shown in the neighborhood plan and use that count. And same thing with OPDs. So again, kind of something that's providing a site plan level detail, we can take that unit count straight from that plan. Oops, sorry. So the third item here is a dedication cap. The updated ordinance includes a provision that cap, caps require, provision that caps, the required land dedication for neighborhood open space at 10% of the total site area. After we ran some calculations, after calculating the required open space, staff compared the result to 10% of total site area. We determined that the cap is needed to ensure that the requirement remains reasonable, particularly for very high-density or mixed-use developments like form-based code districts or the riverfront crossings area. Otherwise, the formula could still otherwise generate an open space requirement that consumes an excessive portion of the site. So the 10% cap is used to kind of keep that reasonable. So like I said, without a cap, projects in riverfront crossings or even our new form-based code districts could really require more parkland than is anticipated by those form-based code districts themselves. So we wanted to make sure that we were proofing this against realistic expectations and not hindering the development feasibility by requiring too much parkland. And then the fourth change is due to, is the map itself. Staff is proposing to relocate the neighborhood open space boundary map into the zoning ordinance itself. So over the many years since the comprehensive plan and Parks Master Plan have been updated, the map has been difficult to find, honestly, with revisions to those two plans. So to keep it kind of more coherent and tied to the implementation language, if just the zoning code, we're proposing to put the map right into the zoning code. We are also proposing to revise the map to consolidate the boundaries of the districts, the neighborhood open space districts, to assemble them into larger units. When discussing the implementation of this ordinance with the Park and Rec staff, it was noted that the current boundaries are too segmented. That map on the left shows you all of those individual small districts, and it can make it difficult to acquire a fee or land and then spend it effectively when that district where you gain it and spend it are so limited. So expanding and consolidating the boundaries will provide greater flexibility to the park service to develop park spaces efficiently. However, you can kind of really see that all we're doing is basically taking things that are in the same area and just removing some of the boundaries, so it's a few areas that are just kind of combined. So here's the existing map of those many smaller districts, sorry, twitched your finger, and then combining them into just slightly larger districts. So it's mostly the same, just larger and under one designation. The other thing that we needed to do with the map was, the map as we have it doesn't anticipate our growth areas. So we've expanded the map boundaries to anticipate where our fringe area agreement already anticipates that we will eventually grow and eventually need to have a plan for parkland. So that's the area on this map in the black dashed lines. So we've added those areas to the map as well. And then, like I said, we did some scenarios just to kind of proof that formula before we settled on a proposal as we have for you tonight. We looked at six different development scenarios to analyze how each formula that we were considering would impact development if we had used it on an existing development scenario. So this table actually shows that while the open space dedication for more traditional residential subdivisions may decrease under the new formula, the change reflects a correction of assumption based in the current code. So we were basically overestimating density in our conventional single-family neighborhoods. The updated formula ties open space requirements directly to the unit count and the most recent household size data, not maximum density. And we're trying to ensure that development contributes neighborhood open space still based on estimated number of people who reside there and not what could potentially be developed. The second example is an example of an infill project where one single-family home lot was divided into two. This would now be exempt under the new proposed ordinance. We don't see a lot of those, but we have seen a handful of them over the several years. And they were generating open space fees that really kind of prohibited good infill And so using the current formula, open space fees for high-density projects, particularly the riverfront crossings, could result in fee in lieu estimations that were exceeding $1 million. It's difficult to justify such a large park, parkland fee in lieu from a planning and policy standpoint, because it doesn't really encourage dense redevelopment, which is what those districts were established to do in the first place. So we wanted to remove that barrier to the kind of infill, compact, walkable developments that align with city goals. So the new formula combined with the 10% cap ensures that open space requirements remain meaningful, yet not excessive, and therefore preserve project feasibility in areas where land is limited and housing demand is high. So the benefits taken together are these changes align with the requirements with actual development patterns while maintaining the city's goal of acquiring high-quality open space as well as new housing units being built. So overall, the updated formula improves predictability, fairness, scalability across zoning districts without compromising our open space objectives. So this is a code amendment, comes to you from the Planning and Zoning Commission. It would be, as I said, applied at prelim and final plats, but it's a text amendment at this point, so it's not development-specific. So at their meeting on July 16th, by a vote of five to zero, the Planning and Zoning Commission concurred with staff's opinion and recommended approval of this code change. Happy to answer questions, but hopefully they're not math.
Great. A few questions, Danielle. The 10% cap is only for what is mandated, right? Like, so a developer could have more than 10% open space, but as far as what we're requiring or how the fee in lieu would be calculated?
Absolutely. And the kind of the, a developer could always propose open space to us. The criteria for accepting that open space is that we want to be able to accept open space we can do something with. So the Parks and Rec Department and their, the Parks Commission review that to make sure whatever's being proposed as open space is appropriate, and then I'm sure they would be happy with more.
I really did not get the part of the fee in lieu of this. Like, you're saying the requirement is 10%, but it can be also fee in lieu. What the point of, do we want open space or we have an option of fee in lieu?
So it's always, the first choice is land. So if there's appropriate land and the city wants that land, then we can require the land. If there's not appropriate land, or, I mean, usually it comes down to, does the development have land that's good for our Parks and Recreation Department to operate a park on? So if there isn't that, they still have to contribute something, and that's the fee in lieu.
I see, okay. Are these only for open spaces that are dedicated? So only those that are taken over by the city?
It's neighborhood open space for public, yeah, public parks.
So it doesn't count open space that would be within a development that's maintained by, for example, a homeowners association?
Right, with a caveat that the form-based code may have some situations similar to that, but it doesn't negate the neighborhood open space.
Do you anticipate this incentivizing any different types of development or scale of development? You mentioned that the fees maybe were prohibitive for smaller, like a single-lot development.
It could, it could have been a deal killer for some of those small one-lot infills. We may have lost some lot splits because they got their estimated fee in lieu and decided not to do it. We don't really know why somebody necessarily would have taken that off the table. What we were doing is looking ahead and anticipating that we really want form-based zone development, and we were not going to be able to do a formula. Our current formula is unworkable for the form-based code. It's just impossible to have a number. So we'd be in a situation where we were stuck at that point, and we wanted to clear the way so that when development was proposed, we'd be ready and to go and have the easy calculation.
Thank you.
And if you have the open space by the developer, that would be maintained by the city?
Yes, city park.
And it will be a city land after that?
Yep.
Danielle, first of all, I like the fact that the district boundaries go into the actual Title 14 as opposed to some amendment somewhere else, so that's a big advancement. I am curious about the consolidation of districts, though, and what the controls are at the city to ensure that there's sort of equitable distribution of that land after the development's done. Is it just done by Parks and Recs to say, hey, we know we have areas where we need more parks?
Yeah, that's, that's what the Parks Master Plan itself studies and anticipates. They look very closely at that system. The comp plan just kind of scratches the surface of that, like just endorses that we care about those things. But then the Parks Master Plan itself studies those individual neighborhoods and identifies individual needs, whether it's more land dedication or whether it's improvements to the facilities in those neighborhoods already. The way the form-based, the way the fee in lieu works is we have to spend the money where we collect the money. So that's the purpose of the map, to say it's collected in the yellow or the purple area, it has to be spent in the corresponding area. With a time limit, there's a five-year time limit as well.
What kind of the thing that we spend the money for over there?
You know, I'm not as sure I can answer that, but it's typically equipment, so it's improvements to shelters, bathrooms, jungle gyms, maybe more.
Yeah, we, trails, shelters, playgrounds, we've used it for tree planting along, in parks and along trails as well.
It will be like budgeted for that area?
Correct, yes. So oftentimes with the CIP project that you'll review in January, you might see a playground and shelter project, and there's a good chance for some of those in a given year that there's neighborhood open space dollars that are complementing the general fund contribution or the city's general obligation bonds. So it's often, it rarely funds something entirely, it's often packaged with other city dollars to allow us to move forward with a project that we'd otherwise fall short on.
Because of this, if we vote yes on this and it goes into effect, are we expecting less revenue into the Parks Department from the fee in lieu?
That was part of those scenarios that we reviewed. We wanted to make sure we knew what the impact was, whether it was less for us or more on the developer and in which scenarios that would happen. This is generally the same, the result is basically the same. It's a little less in some and a little more in the others, but it evens out to be essentially the same.
And I read through this agenda item like three times and heard your presentation, and I still have questions, so apologies if you already covered some things. But one thing that really struck me is, I think the mayor and I went on a bus ride with the Parks Department to give us a tour of all the parks and learned a bunch of cool park facts from them. And they told us that Iowa City is a leader in, I believe they said 98 or 99% of our population lives within a very, like a 10-minute walk from a park or a green space. So I guess I, I just want to make sure that we aren't necessarily getting rid of something that has contributed to this current good situation that we have.
So you have your neighborhood park, then you have kind of like regional park and maybe your citywide park. This fee-in- lieu is really only designed to collect and fund the smaller neighborhood-based parks. So that three acres per thousand is well below what our park system actually provides. I think they are like 22 per, you know, something like exponentially larger than that. That's coming from those larger parks that get tallied into the service level. So everybody ideally should have access to a neighborhood park very easily and then choose to go to whatever regional park has the amenities or the activities that they want to engage with. So it is definitely supporting the Parks Mission.
Cool, thank you.
But the priority is always like finding, like having a space. And if it doesn't work, you can do the fee-in- lieu, right? But the priority is to have an open space, right?
Yes. The priority is always to have an open, per the park's own mission, to have one within an easy reach of every neighborhood. That's also good planning policy.
Correct. And you're going to have a rezoning coming up here and another couple of items for Monument Hills. And I just want to use that example. That's one in which we could have required parkland for, but there was actually a park just, just in the neighborhood next to it. So we actually required the fee-in- lieu instead, and we're enhancing that park now. We're building a trail connection there, and we'll be able to use those dollars. So we also look at just the proximity. Does it make sense to have two subdivisions with two parks right next to each other? Or do we just focus on enhancing one of those and making sure there's good pedestrian, bicyclist connections?
That was my other question, is like, if there is close park, you will require fee-in- lieu?
It all factors into the decision that the park staff makes.
Okay, sound good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online. Before I close the public hearing, council, are you inclined to vote with P and Z? All right, going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give first consideration, please?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by?
Alter.
Alter. Second by?
Mo.
Mo. All council discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Nine F, rezoning Lot 66, Monument Hills. Ordinance to rezonate approximately 7.76 acres of land located on Lot 66. Monument Hills final plat from low-density, single-family residential zone with a planned development overlay to low-density, multifamily residential zone with a planned development overlay. And this is the second consideration, and there has been a request to expedite this item. And can I get a motion to waive the second consideration, please? And thank you.
I move that the rule requiring the ordinance must be considered and voted on for passage to council meetings prior to the meeting, which is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for the final passage at this time.
Moved by Mo.
Second.
Second by Sala. All right, anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online. Council discussion. Roll call, please.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Sala.
Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. Could I get a motion to pass and adopt?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Sala.
Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Motion passed at six to one. Item number 10 is our regular formal agenda. We're going to 10A, ADA curb ramp 2025 project. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the ADA curb ramps 2025 project. Establishment amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'm going to open up the public hearing and welcome Ethan.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. My name's Ethan Yoder. I'm a civil engineer for Iowa City. I'm going to give a brief overview of what the curb ramp project is for this year. To start with, the project locations that we selected are going to be Weber Street at the intersections of Harlock Street, Weber Circle and Eden Gale Drive, Sandusky Drive at Davis Street, Hollywood Boulevard at the intersections of Delwood Drive, the west portion of that, and Hollywood Court. This project is generally going to include removing of non-compliant ADA curb ramps and replacement with compliant curb ramps, full-depth street patches for areas where the pavement is in bad shape, as well as final restoration and seeding. And then to tie this into the city's strategic plan, the ADA compliant crossings help with mobility. There are plenty, some of these locations were actually missing a leg of their curb ramps, so we're adding those in, so it adds additional crossings to help get people across the street. The cost and funding, the estimated construction cost is $165,000. The bid letting is on September 9th, ordering at the September 16th council meeting, and construction is planned to start September 29th with completion in the spring of 2026. Are there any questions?
Is this all complaint-based, or is there a survey?
Nope. So usually we start based off the complaints, and then we'll try to look at the surrounding areas and see if they would have the same issues. So then we try to take a complaint and then try to localize kind of the area that we're working on.
Okay. Is there like a larger, how large is the complaint pool versus what we actually get to each year?
I would have to double-check, but I believe we're somewhere in the 20 to 30 range of complaints right now, and we're trying to get as many as we can. I know that there's a certain budget that we have, and so we're not able to get to all of them every year, but we definitely try to make sure we're taking as care of many as we can.
Okay, thank you.
You said the spring end date, kind of, I know that you've got to wait for, you know, the conditions to be right after winter, but are you saying like April, May?
May.
May?
Yep, just because that's kind of the end seeding window, just because if construction does go into November, that is outside of the fall seeding window, so then we'd be able to take care of restoration in the spring.
Thank you.
Yep.
Are these complaints generally just for things like curbs and curb ramps? Or, because I know that even just faulty sidewalks are like a huge barrier for people in wheelchairs and walkers and stuff like that, so, because I'm thinking about the next thing on our agenda, which is a sidewalk repair, and how that is, it looked to me like it was just kind of like once a year, once, however, it's a particular portion of the city. So I was just wondering if it's just curb ramps and things like that, or just anything in the sidewalk that someone would complain about?
For this, this would just be the curb ramps themselves, plus a little bit of sidewalk that we need to take out just to tie back into the existing.
Thank you.
So you're seeing two of the sidewalk improvement projects on this agenda. The curb ramps, which Ethan is covering, the next one is a routine inspection that we do in a portion of the town, and then we repair that portion of the town. So we actually work through the entire city once every decade by taking portion after portion. And then we also do sidewalk infill, so for those areas that just are absent any sidewalk, you'll see sidewalk infill projects come. Those are typically bid separately. And then the last way we work on sidewalks is anytime we're doing a road project, maybe for underlying utility reasons or just the road surface itself needs to be reviewed, we'll also look at the sidewalks at those times and make improvements. So there could be any number of these things that lead to sidewalk improvements, but this one specifically is just the ADA ramps.
Okay. And I was wondering if, because we're talking about the, you know, like, we get through once every 10 years, the entire city, if there's something that seems a little bit more catastrophic, like I can't even, like, individual-based complaints that's, one of our workers shows up and said, yeah, we have to do this right now?
Correct. We won't, you won't have to wait nine or 10 years. We would add that, so we definitely address those types of issues as they come.
All right, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved, Mo.
Second, Burgess.
All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 10B, 2025 summer sidewalk repair project. Resolution approving project manual and estimate of cost for the construction of the 2025 summer sidewalk repair project. Establishment amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. Going to open up the public hearing and welcome Tyler.
Hello.
Hello.
Let me get this opened up here. So I'll be talking about the sidewalk aspects, so this is kind of the other components of doing the curb ramp repairs. So for this year, so to kind of, I'll get into a little more detail about the program, but essentially this is in response to our annual program that we have for doing repairs of sidewalks throughout the city. So the goal of this program that we have, and this has been around since the late 1990s, that we've had this program in effect, and effectively we just go around, we have the city broken up into 10 different zones, and each year we go through each zones periodically there. And the point of this is to do inspections, I typically do them in the fall, and then we follow up with, after the inspection's done, we'll follow up with property owners, notify them that there is damaged sidewalks or that he's repaired. And the, then we follow up in the spring there to validate to see if any of those repairs are made or if residents have decided that they want the city to do the repairs. And the objective of this program there is that we'll put together the list at the end of that follow-up in the spring there. And what we'll do is we'll put together a list there to then have a list of locations that will get bid out to a contractor to make those repairs. So for this year, we have it set up in what we'll call Area 9 for this map here, so it's mostly in the southeast corner of the city. So this project's a little bit bigger than we've done in the past there just for the amount of locations. The criteria for doing the inspections on each of the sidewalks has not changed, it just happened to be this location had a few more than we normally would see. So we're breaking this up into two phases, so part of it will be done in the summer of this year, going into the fall, and then the other component will be done in the spring and going in the summer of next year. And that's just to facilitate, to have enough time to get everything done. How this relates to the strategic plan is that this targets mostly the impact area mobility. This kind of goes along with our strategies to design and maintain complete streets that are comfortable, safe for all users, and with complete streets, that does include sidewalks along our, throughout our city. And then also this deals with the strategies of to grow and prioritize bike and pedestrian accommodations. Again, with sidewalks, we'll make sure that they're prioritized there for safe passage. For this year's project, we're looking at estimated construction costs of about $230,000, and this will be coming out of the annual sidewalk repair project funds. So we're planning on, upon approval this evening, we'll be issuing the bid documents out tomorrow, and we'll have the bid opening scheduled on September 10th, and then at the next available council meeting, we'll have it award, hopefully awarded there on September 16th. And we're planning on having the selected contractor immediately start going on doing their repair works, and we have the final completion date for next summer.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved, Burgess.
Second, Mo.
All right, council discussion. Roll call, please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 10C, City Park Utility Easement. Resolution granting the conveyance of a utility easement on and under portions of city property near Park Road to accommodate replacement of the city park pool. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Jeff.
Okay, this will be a quick one. This is facilitating a new electrical service connection into city park pool, which is currently being reconstructed. In addition to the new service, this will also underground the overhead utility lines that are west of the pool, running through upper city park, so it'll be a nice improvement. This utility easement just grants them the ability to underground that new service line.
Do we know anything about impacted trees?
I don't have that information right now. I'm pretty sure that the objective would be to avoid all of those trees, but I don't know if there's going to be any impacts. I can certainly circle back to you on that.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
would see. So we're breaking this up into two phases. So part of it will be done in the summer of this year, going into the fall, and then the other component will be done in the spring and going in the summer of next year. And that's just to facilitate to have enough time to get everything done. How this relates to the strategic plan is that this targets mostly the impact area mobility. This kind of goes along with our strategies to design and maintain complete streets that are comfortable, safe for all users. And with complete streets, that does include sidewalks along our, throughout our city. And then also deals with the strategies of to grow and prioritize bike and pedestrian accommodations. Again, with sidewalks, we'll make sure that they're prioritized there for safe passage. For this year's project, we're looking at estimated construction costs of about $230,000 and this will be coming out of the annual sidewalk repair project funds. So we're planning on upon approval this evening, we'll be issuing the bid documents out tomorrow and we'll have the bid opening scheduled on September 10th. And then at the next available council meeting, we'll have it awarded, hopefully awarded there on September 16th. And we're planning on having the selected contractor immediately start going on doing their repair works. And we have the final completion date for next summer.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved. Bergus.
Second. Mo.
All right. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague. Yes. Motion passed at seven to zero. 10C, City Park Utility Easement. Resolution granting the conveyance of a utility easement on and under portions of city property near Park Road to accommodate replacement of the city park pool. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome Jeff.
Okay. This will be a quick one. This is facilitating a new electrical service connection into city park pool, which is currently being reconstructed. In addition to the new service, this will also underground the overhead utility lines that are west of the pool running through upper city park. So it'll be a nice improvement. This utility easement just grants them the ability to underground that new service line.
Do we know anything about impacted trees?
I don't have that information right now. I'm pretty sure that the objective would be to avoid all of those trees, but I don't know if there's going to be any impacts. I can certainly circle back to you on that.
All right. Any other questions? All right. Anyone from the public like to address
this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
Move by.
Alter.
Alter. Second by Sala. Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yeah.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 10D, 1515 Willow Creek Drive Easement Conveyance. Resolution approving the conveyance of a portion of the sanitary sewer easement located within Lot 1 of the McGrath subdivision to Warrior Enterprises LLC. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome our city attorney Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. This also, I believe, will be a quick one. And so we have a little bit more sanitary sewer easement than we need for this property and they want to build a bigger building on their property. And so we want to get out of their way to do so. So we're vacating and conveying that portion that is no longer needed. They will remain served, of course, by sewer and no one else will be affected.
All right. Any questions for Eric?
Yeah. Eric, how often do we actually convey the property, like with the deed that's in the packet?
Yeah, this is unusual. Normally we take the view as statutory required that fair market value needs to be conveyed. But here, since it was essentially a service line easement solely for this property that was granted to us in the first place, we thought it would be appropriate to not charge them to give them their property back. I'm not sure I'm being responsive though. When you, when you say the deed, ultimately we concluded that a quitclaim deed would be the cleanest way to ensure that the rights were conveyed for these folks so that they could go ahead and do their building.
I just see a lot of vacations without an actual deed. So I think it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. And thank you for answering the other question. I didn't have to ask.
Sure.
All right. Here are no more questions. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved. Harmsen.
Second. Bergus.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 10E, ITC Midwest LLC Electric Line Easement. Resolution approving the conveyance of an electric line easement to ITC Midwest LLC. I'm going to open the public hearing and welcome.
John with Water Division. Normally water and electricity are not good to combine, but in this case, we'll talk about it. So we own that parcel there. I'll call it pistachio pudding colored with a little red pip on it. It's over there on the far east side of town and its intended purpose is for future water storage, which is why I'm here to talk about the easement. Currently, there is transmission lines across that parcel. Those transmission lines are going to upgrade their service to higher voltage. So they want to expand the easement footprint. Overall, that won't impact our potential future use, which we've kind of looked at here to see if a water storage facility is sighted, how far we can keep it away from those transmission lines and the easement itself, which the easement is quite large versus where the nearest transmission line will be. So it all works out and fair market value for the property that is going to fall under the easement. That's it.
Here are no questions for you. Thank you. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Welcome.
Thank you.
And you are a part of.
Jamie Tullino, ITC Midwest. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor Teague and council members. I just wanted to take a moment to express gratitude and appreciation for city staff being so helpful and responsive to our needs. ITC continues to make significant investments in Johnson County and we've got 111 circuit miles of infrastructure and five new line builds happening right now. So that's important for our region, economic development and the state. So I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you for being great partners. We're trying to keep our reliability stats up there at 80%. We've decreased all of our outages since inception of the company. We want to keep it that way. So I just wanted to express thank you and thanks for being big partners with us.
Great. Thank you. All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? Seeing no one in person or online. I'm going to close the public hearing. Can I get a motion to give approval, please?
So moved. Alter.
Second. Harmsen.
Counsel discussion. Roll call, please.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed at seven to zero. 10F is CPRB dissolution. Ordinance amending Article 5 entitled Boards, Commissions and Committees, Section 5.01 entitled Establishment of the Iowa City Charter, of the Iowa City Charter and repeal entitled 8 entitled Police Regulations, Chapter 8 entitled Community Police Review Board to dissolve the Community Police Review Board. This is the first consideration and can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Harmsen.
Second.
Mo.
All right. And we'll go to Eric.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this has already been the topic of quite a bit of conversation on council and kind of a difficult decision on how to proceed following some state changes in law that essentially takes away the primary purpose of the CPRB here in Iowa City. But following the CPRB's own unanimous recommendation that they dissolve and pursue their mission through other means, we bring forth this ordinance to your consideration this evening per your direction at the last work session on this topic. They contain two parts. One is the provisions in the Iowa City Charter itself that specifically call out for the creation of the CPRB and the other entitled 8 of our, what I'll call regular city code that speaks to how that city, or community police review board is to operate. So there's two different places that we need to make changes, but it's all contained in this single ordinance amendment.
Any questions for Eric?
I am curious about changing our charter and we can just do that through.
We can. There are several different ways that the charter can be amended. One is by ordinance by the city council. What makes it different than the other ordinance amendments that council normally passes is there's an opportunity for the public to petition to reverse your decision, if you will. But otherwise, yes, by the regular ordinance amendment process.
Eric, do you recall just as far as the timing of this legislation and our charter review and all of that? This wasn't on the radar for the committee at all, was it?
I, boy, I'm trying to remember when it was passed. I'm not sure I could say. I don't think, I'm looking to Kelly to see if she has a better memory than me. I don't think it was something we talked about.
I don't recall that either. And the commission, Charter Commission was done with their review.
Last calendar year. Yeah. Right. So, yeah. Well, Kelly, as usual, has a better memory than me. But yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand and I'll acknowledge you. Seeing no one in person or online. Counsel discussion.
I just had a, I guess, it is a question, but it's, it's a follow-up from this particular thing. Is, last time we had a pretty robust conversation because it was both, we were discussing both the dissolution and what would potentially replace it. And we decided to go simply with like, let's take some time to figure this out as to what alternatives could be suggested to us. I'm just wondering, has there been, I know a lot of things are on people's plates, but is there kind of a timeline of when we can expect some different descriptions or possibilities?
I think we'd be ready in September, maybe early October, just depending on what the other work session items that you have. But it'd just be Chief Liston and I presenting to you. We'd want to get something in writing that you can look at and think about before the meeting this time around and then look forward to your direction.
Thank you.
And I'll just add for members of the public who may not have been with us, the last time this was discussed, the effective date of this state law is August 16th. So it's important that we take action promptly for that part and then be more deliberate and intentional about what we're going to do in response.
Yeah. I would also just like to say that the Citizens Police Review Board, as it stood before this stupid law was passed, was, on the state level, was already kind of toothless. It was already something where we didn't have subpoena power. It was kind of just a police review, citizens review board in name. And so if we kept the CPRB alive, which we could have kept up some type of skeletal remains of the CPRB up, just call it that, but not have the main function there. You could have something like discussing policy, potentially. But I think just through conversation and the will of the Citizens Police Review Board itself, they recommended dissolving this form of it and creating something else. So that's where the process is at right now. And I just wanted to make sure that was clear for everybody who might see Citizens Police Review Board dissolution on the agenda and wondering what the hell is going on if you didn't have the context. Because I know I would have reacted that way. So, yeah.
I think I definitely would agree with your assessment of this law and I would add unnecessary and ridiculous to that. Just in general, because this is, you know, this is something that actually does provide some oversight by citizens. And so I'll push back just slightly a little bit. Just want to make sure to acknowledge, even though very valid to say, you know, would have liked more teeth in this, make sure, just to acknowledge the hard work that has been done by generations, if you will, of CPRB members from the community who have sat through countless meetings, reviewed tons and tons of things like dash cam videos and the personal officer videos. I've actually had the police chief be a part of that. And, you know, I've been, one of the things from reading these reports that we get every meeting and in our packets, which, you know, there is actually a value to having some of these complaints evaluated and then having a public record created. And sometimes they say, yeah, there was something here that wasn't right. And other times they say, well, we looked at the video and the complaint, you know, doesn't have any merit. And having that, which is one of the reasons I say this is one of the most ridiculous things, and this is a tough competition out of the state legislature, is that the CPRBs actually provide both accountability and credibility when they work well and do their job for police departments. Because, you know, a police department that has that sort of process, and they know it has, that is a good thing for our community and our community is worse off having this taken away from us. I know one of the things as I, in the other parts of my life, pushed to create, get people out in Des Moines that are going to restore sanity, this is on my list of things I will be loudly asking that we get the right to reinstate and at least to the level that it was before, if not improving upon what we had before. So, yeah, this is just, this has been such a frustrating thing to watch happen.
For sure.
I also want to join you and say thank you for the hard work that the commissioner was doing. I was one, I was a formal CPRP, you know, review board and I know how much time it took to look at those videos and everything. But also I want to join Oliver and say it was not even, I don't know, it wasn't, doesn't have a teeth, it's not, it wasn't powerful for me because I still want to say that this, I don't know for how long we have this, but when I joined the CPRB, it was the first time we can sustain a complaint. All the time the police was right until like myself and Roy Sanborters and another Latino person joined the media, joined the CPRB. And that was the first time ever in history of CPRB we sustained a complaint. So that said, I was, you know, even though as, you know, Council, you know, Sean said, there is many laws that has been, rights has been taken off. And this is one of the ridiculous. I agree with that. But there is another thing that has been done by the state. I don't like it. But for this one, yes, it was there. But I still, I was not like, oh, they took like very good, kind of like amazing commission that we had. I'm going to be just honest here and transparency because, you know, I just believe that is never being sustained complaint forever. And even after we sustained the complaint, what happened? Nothing. So it wasn't, I hope we come up with different power thing, thing out of this. But, you know, for the record, as you just, you know, Council Y-line said, maybe, you know, we will come up with something good. And, but that one was okay. Thank you.
I'll just echo appreciation for all those that served on our CPRB. And this is why it is so important to have elected officials throughout our entire nation be held accountable to the people and what is needed. The other thing I will say is that local control is so important. And this is another thing that we saw that the, you know, communities don't have the local control. And that is so important when we're talking to folks in Des Moines that we need local control because every community is not the same. We do know that there are folks in our community that were dedicated and ready to serve on our CPRB. But those restrictions that we are held to kind of made it teethless as we've been hearing. And so again, that's why I would, I just want to echo, thank you to everyone that served. And again, local control is something that we need to continue to fight for.
Before you take the vote, I'd just like to point out for anybody that's interested, a couple of years ago, we did a complete history of the CPRB and we looked back all the way to its, from its creation in 1997 to at that point, the end of 2023. And you can go through and look at all the types of complaints that were received and the disposition of the board, whether they agreed or didn't agree with the complaint or the chief's findings. So nice piece of history. It's still available on the city website under the CPRB page. And that page will eventually go away as that service is no longer there, but it's archived with the city clerk's office if anybody wants to look at that in the future. It's a great, great history of that review board.
You said it will be on the archive anyway?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
Teague.
Yes.
Y-line.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Bergus.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. 10G, Parking Study and City Initiative Revisions to Zoning Code Parking Standards. Resolution authorizing the procurement of consult services to develop a parking study and city initiated revisions to zoning code parking standards. This is a motion to approve. Can I get a motion, please?
So moved. Bergus.
Second. Alter.
All right. And welcome again, Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Danielle Sisbon, Neighborhood and Development Services. This item hits on the values of the strategic plan for partnerships and engagement. It is engagement included in this contract. It's part of the neighborhood and housing strategy to update the comprehensive plan in the zoning code to encourage compact neighborhoods with diverse housing types and land uses. Parking standards certainly contribute to those things. So as way of background, just to remind you, the city was awarded $3.75 million in pro, federal pro housing grant funds. This contract is just a very small part of that. But the funds allow the city to undertake activities that will remove barriers to housing and increased housing, housing production. One of the funded activities is this parking study to right-size our parking requirements. The minimum onsite parking standards that our code currently has are often identified as a factor that inhibits the construction of new housing. And revising our parking standards will help lower construction costs and promote more sustainable urban development. The scope and outcomes of this contract are identified here. The consultant in this graphic does a good job of showing how they have two simultaneous tracks of activity that happen. So there's engagement going on at every stage of this contract as well as the technical analysis that they will produce and to ultimately end up in passing a parking, parking standard zoning code changes. So the comprehensive parking study is intended to evaluate parking supply and demand downtown and in the neighborhoods near downtown or similar to downtown. Evaluate the existing typical land use categories and the associated minimum parking requirements that are in our current code to conduct stakeholder outreach to business owners and members of the development community. the development community, and then ultimately to propose and adopt, help us adopt zoning code amendments using their findings from the study to right-size our parking standards. There would be a series, as that code amendment goes through, for public hearings and an adoption process. This is just that typical slide that shows you that, yes, anything that comes as a zoning code amendment first goes to P and Z for recommendation, and then comes to city council for a public hearing. Parking standards are applied at the time of a site plan or a building permit review, so the standards are there and ready in the code for, for use once they would be updated. So contract and budget timeline, we've selected or proposing to have you endorse us selecting HNTB. They are a company that are experts in parking management, zoning codes, parking surveys, and data collection, and engagement. Their portfolio includes working in other college towns, since we know that parking is, in a college town, kind of a seasonal ebb and flow, has very unique characteristics. So this contract is for $124,938 of budget, and they anticipate a 20-month, 21-month project timeline, because, again, it would normally not take that long to do this kind of study, but want to make sure that when they're out there surveying how many people are parking where, that they're collecting a full picture of our community.
Can you go back a little bit? You said this is only going, this is study going to be only for downtown, or I missed something?
It's intended, the scope of the RFP was to evaluate parking supply and demand downtown and in neighborhoods near downtown, or in the type of zoning districts that are similar to those areas. So primarily looking at multifamily, wherever multifamily might be similar to those neighborhoods. So they're going to study how much parking is needed in those areas, and then if that's applicable, applicable to other zoning districts, that would then be applied.
Automatically will apply. We don't need to have, again, like approval or anything?
The consultant would tell us whether we have something very unique going on downtown, or whether they look at it and go, okay, downtown, even though it's downtown, parking is parking, and apartment building, but that kind of unit mix or whatever is going to be similar in any part of town, or whether it's different, whether there's a different unique component to downtown or the near downtown neighborhoods, so.
I was really looking forward for this parking study, but I thought it will be like citywide parking study, because I believe that, you know, new developer will be maybe outside even downtown, and maybe we have few developer will be in downtown, you never know, but as I see downtown, I think the more developer, especially for affordable housing and for any type of mixed, you know, use housing, or like mixes income housing, market price housing, those are the thing that I really wish if we can have minimum parking requirement for the developer, so they can build more. That's why, you know, I thought this is will be like a citywide thing.
We have a certain number of surveys that they'll conduct for us. We can certainly ask them to look farther abroad than maybe that first ring neighborhoods around downtown and see just if it is different or not different, to include that in their sampling, so that we can look at a holistic parking code update.
Can you talk a little bit more about the data that we get? I mean, is it really just how occupied parking spaces are, and is it possible that this could actually come with a conclusion that says we need to increase parking requirements? Or I guess I'm unclear, I think we are maybe, in council, have had many discussions about how there's an appetite to reduce parking the right way, and I'm kind of curious what we'll get from these people before they draft a change or amendment.
Sure. Well, we don't go into, into one of these with, you know, set ideas of what the outcome would be, we're obviously studying it to find out, but all of the work that HT, HNTB has done across the country has been to reduce parking standards. We're probably not that much different than any other community, and we probably have minimum parking standards that are much higher than what we actually need. So while we're not like predetermining what the outcome would be, probably the conversation's going to be trending towards reducing the required amount of parking.
The second part of that is how, how far, how, I don't know, horizontal do they go into our code? And I'm specifically thinking about, parking is a tool that Iowa City has long used to preserve affordable housing and preserve historic assets, and that's the tool that we have. Will they actually analyze that, and is, or is that just something that the internal staff has to just sort of make as part of our conversation?
So we want them to study whatever impact those changes in parking requirements will have, so whether that's on certain types of development, or pressures for development where we're not expecting it, or, you know, seeing parking occur where we don't currently. Part of their scope is to study those unintended consequences, so that we're aware of what choices we're making when we propose changes to you.
Yeah, and, and well, I was trying to understand both this slide and also the consultant agreement, is there a check-in with us mid-process, or do we only see the ordinance once it's drafted?
I'd have to look at the contract again to remind myself, and they have several tasks laid out, and they participate with a stakeholder group, and I don't know that they necessarily bring anything to you until closer to having a formulated proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
I was going to ask, when we talk about parking, obviously, there's kind of like the foregone, foregone, like, conclusion or the assumption that we're not necessarily, our reliance on cars is going to be the same for a long period of time. So I was wondering, do, is like our climate action involved in this at all, or is the conversation as like, well, as a city, because we want to be climate friendly, we don't necessarily think that in 40 years, we should all be taking a car to work every single day, and instead, we should keep doing things like we're doing, like free transit and stuff like that, and like increasing routes, and so, you know, I'm just wondering if that comes into the calculation at all.
It's more of a policy discussion. There's certainly, the consultant's certainly going to look at bus ridership and our transit system and identifying, you know, whether we are a walkable, bikeable community, and whether people are making use of those modes. They'll, they'll look at the way people are already moving around and contribute that to their study, but I don't think they'll necessarily be saying a policy direction for the future that's in any way kind of more than a technical analysis.
Okay.
I think that I would really like a mid-process check-in on this one, because when you say climate change, you have one thing you're thinking of that I agree with, and I'm also thinking about not tearing down existing buildings, which has massive ecological impacts, so, and I see our parking as this really weird tape that holds together a lot of specific neighborhoods, and it's the wrong tool, and we should change it. I don't disagree with that, but I'm worried it's fragile.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah, but can I ask a question? How it took, how much take us, or how much would cause us to do a citywide, do you think, study? And also, like, how long that going to take? And I have a lot of question, because I feel like there is many people would like to, maybe we're going to see many developer, or now, between now and the 21 months that we have for this study, many developer will come up, maybe they building something for mixed use, whether it's affordable housing and market price, and how can we ensure that also we have market minimum for those developer?
So the project proposals did have add-ons, every contract has, you've kind of bid alternate add-ons. This particular price is the price that we have scoped out in our action plan for the HUD pro-housing money. I'm not sure that we can increase our scope with the HUD pro-housing money.
Yeah.
We had to submit that to HUD and lock that in, so.
I forget that's HUD.
But I think, I think we'll have the data, a lot of the, you know, the, the sampling and whatnot is concentrated downtown, but the, the findings and the recommendations will, will be easily extrapolated to districts that'll cover the entire city. So if you're thinking about a multifamily or mixed use on the, on the fringes of town, we'll be able to, to kind of extrapolate what's being determined downtown through the sampling and make recommendations to the zoning code. We don't necessarily have to do the full in-depth study of the entire city in order to do that. The most complicated piece is your urban center. Obviously, that's where you have the most, your highest density, and you have the highest concentration of people moving around. So it's really important that we sample that really well. I think the rest of it'll come, so where I'm getting at is the recommendations will have citywide implications.
Sure.
But the study itself is mostly going to focus on the downtown, and then we'll just kind of move out from there.
Okay, that sound good.
All right, any other questions for Danielle?
Can I just confirm that the council would like some sort of mid-process check-in on this?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Great. Anyone from the public like to address this topic? If you're online, please raise your virtual hand. Welcome.
My name is Mary Grabbin, and I live in Iowa City. I want to address parking, just because we, we don't live downtown, doesn't mean that we don't have a parking problem. I live in Towncrest. For years, I've been trying to get the city to post no parking sign from the driveway over the apartment house where I live to the corner, because you have to take the Towncrest bus, in order to see the bus, if there's parking, the big vans all over the place, you have to step out into the middle of the street to see, you know, to see what traffic is coming, so you can go across the street and get the bus. Iowa City streets are narrow, and my street is a two-way street. It should really be a one-way street, because you got parking on both sides, and you got the city bus. I don't ride the city bus anymore, but I know what it is to ride the city bus. And don't be like the Hayek administration, think that downtown is the only place that matters. People live, the community lives outside of the downtown area. They'll come down here for the farmer's market and things like that, but the communities, those are taxpayers. They pay real estate tax, and they, their problems deserve to be looked at. So this is what it is, if you're going to have a study, have a citywide study, where you shouldn't park, because shoveling snow is a problem in my neighborhood, because, you know, you have to come up to the corner, to do the street, you have to come up to the, to the corner to do the street, and, and because the bus runs on the street, that makes it a, a main thoroughfare, and it's the Towncrest bus, and I like the free buses, but the problem is, they didn't really consult the people. Some of the people were very affected by losing their bus stop, and some of them were disabled, and, and it's, it's a thing that you have to consider, the people who do not live downtown. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic?
My name is Numala Buissa, Iowa City. I think it's also important to address big events in Iowa City. There is huge events like football games and other things, and I think those should be considered on their own and have a plan for themselves. You mentioned environmental, I guess those are important. There is changes in transportation as, as we speak, artificial intelligence is happening, locate a parking spot is happening where it can become more efficient. Some of those issues also need to be considered when this study is done. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to invite you to sign in at the podium there. Thank you. Anyone else like to address this topic? See no one in person or online? Counsel discussion?
I like the idea of the mid-process check-in a lot.
Thank you all for bringing that.
Roll call, please.
Sella?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Wyline?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Burgess?
Yes.
Harmsen?
Yes.
Mo?
Yes.
Motion passed at seven to zero. All right, we are on to item number.
10H?
10H. All right, equal protection resolution. This is a resolution reaffirming commitment to civil rights and equal protection for LGBTQ plus people. Can I get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
All right, move by.
Burgess.
Burgess, second by Alter. All right, and anyone, well, we'll do some council comments, since this was a council-initiated item, and so would you like to?
Oh, my, sure, Mayor, thank you. Well, so this resolution was developed in coordination with members of the Johnson County Trans Advisory Committee, who'd been working for over a year at the county level to come up with ways in which our local governments may be able to help protect trans individuals who are specifically under attack right now. The mayor and I met with some of those folks, and Councilor Mo then joined for a subsequent meeting, and like I said, this resolution comes on, I should say, Johnson County as the county, the Board of Supervisors passed a resolution just about a month ago, maybe a little less than that, sort of reaffirming their own human rights ordinance and speaking to what they would like to do. Iowa City is in a position of, I think, more strength and ability to protect our residents than the county because of our human rights ordinance, as it is currently written, and our Human Rights Commission. During our work session today, we learned about the Human Rights Ordinance and some history of that from our Equity Director, Stephanie Bowers, and I encourage folks to watch that work session as well, but some of the things that we learned that I think were behind why the city council was enthusiastic and moving forward with this, is that local ordinances can be, can provide stronger protections than the state or federal level, that is currently the case. Local enforcement can provide faster response relating to complaints of discrimination in the community, and responses at the city level can be tailored to that community and really reflect our values. So what you will see here is building on what Johnson County opened the door for, and the Johnson County Trans Advisory Committee and all of that very long work, and I think we're, we're building on that. I will just note, for those who are here for the conversation about the CPRB, our Human Rights Commission does have teeth, it does have subpoena power, it does have the ability to actually enforce what is titled to our Human Rights Ordinance that prohibits discrimination on, on 15 different characteristics, including gender identity, and that has been the law in Iowa City for 30 years this month, since 1995. Have anything else, Mayor, counselor?
No, thank you. Well said, and I appreciate all the extra work that you put in to make the county's resolution fit our city and be even stronger, thanks to the committee that spent a year developing this, that was a lot of time, thank you very much for that. And also, the singular question that I asked, not the singular question, but the one question I asked when I was invited at the end was, okay, do we really want to shine a light on ourselves that we have these protections? And the group said, of course, what good is a law if we aren't letting everybody know that we have it? And so, sorry for the stupid question, but I think a lot of people might actually ask that question, is, oh, we're putting ourselves at risk, but I fully agree with you that if we have this law, let's own this law and hold on to it.
All right, and I'm going to wait until it's time for the council to deliberate, but at this moment, we're going to see who would like to speak during this public time. And if you're online, please raise your virtual hand. We're so happy that folks are here tonight. Just want to get a count, I don't know if there's anyone out in the hall, if someone can tell me if there's anyone else out there with their hands raised. All right, I see three online, six. I'm going to go ahead and allow for three minutes each for everybody to come, and I just, because there may be some new people here to your city hall, I just want to just remind folks that council cannot engage in discussion or debate until the appropriate time for council discussion. However, once the commenter has left the podium, council may ask staff to respond to a concern or a question posed by the public, or to follow up with the speaker. So we do invite everybody to come up right now, and we're going to allow three minutes. Welcome. And I also want to remind people that in the back, there are little stickers that you can pre-fill out your name, and just drop it in the basket, you don't even have to take it and stick it anywhere. All right, welcome to, you please state your, this, your name and your city, please.
Hi, Brian Nillis, Iowa City. I wholeheartedly support this resolution, and I would like to cede the rest of my time to the person in person next here.
Great. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Emma Denny from Iowa City. Some of you know me. I'm a member of the Johnson County Transgender Advisory Committee and was a lead in drafting Johnson County's version of this resolution. I and other community members, some of whom are here with us today, have come before this body a number of times in the last 18 months, demanding action and accountability, demanding that the city stand up to the constant attacks. has, especially the commitment to joining the legal fight to restore and preserve our rights and the understanding that these are constitutional rights. Iowa City would be among the first cities in the country to write this into their policy if this resolution is adopted, and I am thankful to have had the opportunity to speak to every member of this council on this before this resolution today. At the same time, further action is needed. While this resolution lays out a commitment to fighting individual discrimination claims, we know that systemic discrimination against trans people, particularly trans women, happens in Iowa City. I know personally that employment and housing discrimination happened to trans people in Iowa City, and I and any other trans person in this room could tell you of our experiences. We know that our community members struggle to access necessary medication and medical care in Iowa City. Access issues that have caused a number of people to flee the city and the state. We know that trans people are more likely to experience homelessness in Iowa City, and we have heard tonight a lot about that. To that end, I would recommend the following five future actions. First, amend Title II to include a right to change sex in Iowa City. This would be a different approach than any other city has taken to ensuring rights, and Iowa City would be the first city in the world to consider such a right. Two, amend Title II to include a right to health care in Iowa City, as well as explicitly protecting providers and recipients of trans health care, as other cities do. Three, amend Title II to include a right to housing in Iowa City. This would empower the city to take meaningful action towards ensuring landlords do not discriminate against anyone. Four, the creation of an emergency grant program to cover costs of residents whose health care has been taken away through violent discrimination by the state. And five, a ban on conversion therapy and so-called gender exploratory therapy, conversion therapy by another name, in Iowa City. These are all serious and meaningful actions that would protect trans people, LGBTQ-plus people, and all Iowa City residents from many forms of state tyranny and state oppression. We heard in the work session today that the Iowa City Human Rights Commission's first project was addressing housing discrimination in the 1960s. It took up this cause before there was a state or federal law compelling them to, and before most of the state even considered such a commission. It is encouraging to see the city taking up this resolution as a step in continuing that legacy, but we all know that the work is not done and much more will still be needed. Trans liberation now, trans liberation forever. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to online, and I'm going to acknowledge Clara. Welcome.
Hi, I hope everybody can hear me all right. My name is Clara Reinen. I live here in Iowa City, and I just wanted to voice my wholehearted support of this resolution. Like Dr. Emma Denny just said, there's still more work to be done. And in particular, I want to acknowledge that most of this resolution that was written by the Trans Advisory Committee at the county level was written by queer and transgender folks who had to take on an enormous amount of emotional and mental labor to do this. And as we continue to see how we can strengthen these protections for trans and queer folks here in Iowa City, I just want to, in particular, remind the city council that you all still have a duty to improve yourselves, continue educating yourselves, particularly because I still regularly hear members of city council misgendering or using they/them pronouns as a catch-all when you're not sure of someone's pronouns. So I wanted to say, thank you for considering this. I hope you pass it. I encourage you to, I urge you to. This is a great first step, but it certainly isn't the last step, and there's still more to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Please welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Yes, Micah Covington. Micah Covington, Iowa City. Pardon my voice in that. I had oral surgery this morning, but I felt it was important enough to be here. I am a trans woman, and I support this. I sued the state in 2019 to get gender-affirming care approved under Iowa Medicaid, and it was. We won. The state took it back. And the city really needs to protect its providers at the University of Iowa that are providing gender-affirming care. Please make sure you pass this and amend it to protect providers and patients. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go online to David. Welcome, David.
Hi, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is David Sterling. I was born and raised here in Iowa City and very excited to hear about this. It's been a real trip to have my home state declare me a non-person, but, I mean, I've been seeing it coming over the last 15 or so years. I wasn't always going to expect the council to be ready to stand up for us in this moment. And I think this is a fantastic first step. I'd also like to second Dr. Emma Denny's five proposals. I think that they cast a really nice broad net, and no matter what the city's able to accomplish, that net's going to catch some things, and that's going to be critical to saving lives and making progress carry forward. I'd like to see the city council also consider this more proactive strategy when it comes to other matters that particularly target marginalized people, such as housing discrimination. I've experienced housing discrimination and job discrimination due to my identity. Yeah, thank you so much for this. And, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. And we're going to move in person. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, my name is Storma Brink. I'm from North Liberty, but I work in Iowa City. I want to second Dr. Denny's suggestions to this council. I think one of my greatest fears that I have is that this resolution will not turn into concrete action. We originally came to you because we were targeted by UIPD because of our transness a little over a year ago, among a myriad of other issues. And while we waited for action, our problems have only increased. We are now in the beginning stages of a genocide against trans people in the United States. I believe that they will take further steps to ban us from public life in the next legislative session, and you have to act now before the next legislative session in January. We are drowning. Our community leaders are drowning. I am drowning. I've received calls from trans people in this town at 3:00 AM breaking down because they were terrified about what our government is going to do to them. My friends keep moving away to Minnesota because they refuse to await the fresh horrors that the Iowa legislature has in store for them. People on Medicaid no longer have access to gender-affirming care. And to my surprise, this now also includes contraception for people whose legal sex does not match the sex that HHS deems appropriate for it, which they documented in a memo to all providers accepting Medicaid patients that I can provide to the council upon request. But the most horrifying thing from a trans person that was disclosed to me this summer was that they tried to self-amputate a part of their body with a razor blade because they could not access gender-affirming surgeries anymore due to Iowa's Medicaid ban. Enacting that ban was the primary reason they took away our rights. If we are at the point of people trying to self-amputate body parts because they can't access necessary medical care, our local government has to step in and fucking do something. While this resolution is the first step, there's a lot of concrete work that needs to be done to protect our community. This resolution states that our city commits to prioritizing budgetary expenditures that align with the city's values, including human rights. And I expect that when the budget is negotiated, that you will put your money where your mouth is and turn this resolution into tangible action for the community. You need to stand against genocide before the extermination step starts. I will ask you again, as I did a year ago, give us anything, anything concrete to help us. You can start with this. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move online to Samantha. Welcome.
Hello. I'm sorry, Todd just started barking. I just wanted to quickly acknowledge the hard work of Dr. Emma Denny and Sean on this resolution and thank Iowa City for taking this on so quickly. It took a very long time to get Johnson County's up and running, and so this was, I think, a pretty quick turnaround, and thank you for being proactive, or div, rather, about it. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Ashfall. I'm from here in Iowa City. This is the first place I've ever felt like at home. I have lived in one other place. I did not know that I didn't feel at home there until living here for like a year. In April of last year, knowing pretty much nobody in town, I spoke at a community push for council to designate Iowa City as a trans safe city. And I was just floored by the fact that there were people, let alone the sheer amount of people who showed up there, that were organizing things like that. And then the year since, I have made friends with like all of the coolest people I've ever met. And as others have said, they keep moving away because it's scary here, and that sucks. I never want to leave Iowa. I have just always known that I can't, like spiritually. And I'd like to stay with that. I want to be able to stay here in Iowa City, and I think that it's possible, and I think that the people here, you know, are willing to fight for their ability to stay here, I gesture to the crowd. So I'm thrilled to see this, you know, here and supported by council, and I echo Storm in hoping that actual concrete measures follow to keep this promise.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hello, my name is Ria LaFaire. I was up here earlier, some of you may remember. I'm a trans woman, and as I started my original time up here, I came from Kansas City, a city that is designated a sanctuary city. But when I met my wife, discussion inevitably came to where are we going to live as a couple? And initially, our plan was Kansas City. But because we do this for our loved ones, we always come to visit where they are from, especially when they speak of the good things in this city. And I thought this was just pride. This is a place that she had lived most of her life. But when I first came here, the amount of queer pride and trans flags and love for someone like me changed my mind on where we were going to live. This resolution isn't just important to us. It is vital because I made that decision to jump into a place that was already guaranteeing my safety, into a place that was promising my safety instead. The amount of true people here, just like with our previous speaker, that truly feel the community you have here is fantastic but bleeding out on the floor dying. It isn't just important you make this resolution. It is like Emma says, you need to make this have a fierce way to be attractive to people. When I originally thought of Iowa, I did not think I would get this community. And I really do not want to see someone scare you away into what the stereotype was in my mind of this place. I am so happy of what this place is, and this resolution isn't just preserving it, it is promising scared people that we are going to be safe here, that we are going to stare down the people that are telling us to shy away and be scared. None of that should happen. So as someone who's only been here, just now getting on to a year, I really want to know that this place is not just making a straw man argument or making some sort of symbolism. It needs to be conviction. So I believe you are all good people by bringing this forward. I just hope that this is not an empty promise, and it is something that I think every one of us came here specifically to beg you. Make this a conviction. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
My name is Gwendolyn Neal. I'm from Iowa City. This is my first time addressing any kind of governing body, and I would not have gotten the guts to come up here to speak were I not motivated by fear. I echo the fears that so many people who have already spoken of have discussed already. I don't need to tread that ground again. I would like to highlight the proactive approach that several other people have suggested so far, particularly the five points suggested by Dr. Emma Denny. I would also like to reinforce what Storma Brink mentioned regarding incipient genocide. That is to say that there is a specific reason why our civil rights were taken away from the state code in February, and that was to pave the way for further discriminatory laws that the civil rights would have made challengeable in court. It is perfectly obvious that they intend to continue legislating and restricting our ability to live, work, and love in Iowa, and I have little other to say to that than to express my fear. This is a moment where it's going to require a certain amount of moral courage to continue recognizing what is right, to continue recognizing that marginalized people are not something that can be cast aside for political convenience, but something that has to be preserved to maintain the brotherhood and community that we all have the potential to realize sticking together. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please give your name and city you're from.
Numa Abuissa, Iowa City. I want to just reflect a little bit of what I heard that's really touching the emotions we've heard. I just want to also state that I am on the platform for the Democratic Party, and I just want to state what the platform for the Iowa Democratic Party addressed this issue here. Democratic ratifies the new platform on June 15, 2024. Within this platform, the party endorses strong protections and support for transgender, intersex, and non-binary individuals. Key highlights include support for non-discrimination advocates, advocates for laws, policies protecting the rights, benefits, and privileges of all gender identities and expressions, covering employment, health care, both medical and mental, housing, education, and public accommodations, including restrooms. These are Iowa values, and I would expect Iowa City to be above and beyond those values. And that's what we look forward for you guys, and I hope you've had enough time to address this issue. The transgender community came to support the, to stop the genocide in Gaza, and I'm here to support the stop of the genocide for them as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Monti, Iowa City. The best time to have passed this resolution was probably 20 years ago. The second-best time to have passed this was last year, when the first explicitly anti-trans law passed the legislature, or last year when seven members of this community were detained unlawfully and arrested. Right now is at best the third-best time. Want to echo that the reason it took a year and a half to make this happen was not because we were, you know, making sure it was all very legally sound or whatever. It was because we faced a lot of institutional pushback and had to do a lot of this work ourselves. I say me as if like so many people in this room didn't, like, weren't instrumental in making... The transgender community came to support the, to stop the genocide in Gaza, and I'm here to support the stop of the genocide for them as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Monte, Iowa City. The best time to have passed this resolution was probably 20 years ago. The second best time to have passed this was last year, when the first explicitly anti-trans law passed the legislature, or last year when seven members of this community were detained unlawfully and arrested. Right now is at best the third best time. Want to echo that the reason it took a year and a half to make this happen was not because we were, you know, making sure it was all very legally sound or whatever. It was because we faced a lot of institutional pushback and had to do a lot of this work ourselves. I say me as if like so many people in this room didn't like, weren't instrumental in making this happen. They really weren't. It's, in the state and around the country, there are a not insignificant number of people and institutions dedicating a lot of time, energy, money, and resources towards making being transgender as difficult and miserable as they can, if not outright impossible. This is an ideological project. It is not going to stop unless it is resisted. If we give an inch, if we blink, we lose ground. We can't afford that, especially not, you know, before the next legislative session. You don't, God knows what they're going to throw at us. I hope in the future that the protections, that further protections like the ones described by Dr. Denny can be insured, as well as ensuring unrestricted access to evidence-based medical care, such as hormone replacement therapy and gender-affirming surgery for all who seek it. You can't not know this anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, Nicole Jaeger. I live here in Iowa City and have been attending the Johnson County Trans Advisory Meeting since their inception. Jules Fields-Petersen talks about how anti-trans attacks, legislation, et cetera, is an indication of authoritarianism. I myself, after the Civil Rights Removal Act in March, my, my child, whose pronouns were they/them, told me that, never mind, their pronouns were he/him. And I didn't question it. Until the county recently considered the, a resolution, a different one than the one you're seeing today. And then my child let me know that the reason that that happened was because they knew, my nine-year-old, who I'm sharing this with their permission, was so terrified by that decision in March that they didn't, they no longer felt safe to be themselves. I was here last year and heard, as many of you did, all of you did, the comments from the public about why we needed to do more for our trans community. And I think about, I'm from small-town Iowa, a kid that came from Dubuque that said, I came here because I thought it would be more safe. I'm so grateful to you all today for considering this resolution. And I'm so hopeful that somehow it's going to pass 7-0. Because it is critically important. I'd really like to be able to welcome my brother-in-law, my best friend from childhood. I'd like to be able to know that my child could feel safe here forever. And you all today have a critical role in making that possible. There's a whole lot more I'd love to say, but I'll leave time for everyone else. Thank you once again for considering this today.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, my name is Alexa Turnow. I'm from Iowa City. I teach middle school in ICCSD. And so I wanted to come talk to you today. As a teacher, kind of just what I've seen in the school and with my students, yeah, you should pass this. If you have gotten to work with any of the kids in ICCSD, they're the best. It's so cool to work here. I feel very lucky to work with these students. They're amazing. And kind of as Nicole said too, they're, they're so brilliant. And even I teach middle school, and they, they know what's going on, on the federal level, on the state level. They know how it affects them and their friends and their families and their futures. And they're aware of that. And I think students today, they, they carry around a fear with them in school for their physical well-being more than a lot of us maybe had to. Can't speak for everybody, definitely not. But there is a lot of fear in school, and it shouldn't be there. And my students in creative projects, when they get to do creative engineering projects, unprompted, a lot of them actually build in safety as something they're trying to engineer. So it's, it's very on their brains. And as I said, since they, they know what's happening on the state and federal levels, I think you making this decision as a city is just so hugely important, especially what Council Burgess was saying before about the strength that we have as a city. And they should feel supported by us. And you doing this and the decisions that the school board make as well, allow us to continue to support our students, you know, resource-wise, legally, and through mentorship. So please pass this. And also, as people have said before, I think all of us have experienced friends moving away, which is heartbreaking. I moved here six years ago for grad school and wasn't planning on staying, but I love it, so I stayed, as many others have said. But people are moving away if they have the means to, which is really difficult. And it's especially difficult for families and impossible for secondary students, you know? And for that reason, even if you do move, safety is not guaranteed there. So all we can do is make it safer here. And this resolution is the first step in doing that, to ensure that our students and everybody in our community here can feel safe now and continuing for the future. So please pass this.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Ashley Mampa. I am the Political Action Chair of COGS, which is the Grad Student Union at the University of Iowa, as well as a member of the History Department. I'm here today to urge you to pass this resolution before you. I've been in Iowa City for only about a year, and during my time, I've been privileged to know many trans people as colleagues, coworkers, friends, and community members. What is not unsurprising, but what is certainly striking is how many people have told me, how many trans folks have told me they are in the process of either, either leaving or they are considering leaving this state. Trans folks are terrified and feel incredibly unsafe, even in a more progressive area like Iowa City. Across the nation, we are witnessing a horrifying upsurge in callous disregard for trans people. Even in this area, I have witnessed my trans colleagues and coworkers facing harassment unlike that which I've encountered in the past. And I grew up in a pretty conservative Missouri area. I've witnessed people choosing to aggressively misgender, call people slurs, otherwise insult and harass trans people for no other reason than their transness. I would argue that these harassers are emboldened by the current lack of political protections for trans people. Under the Trump and Reynolds administration, harassers know that they can get away with cruelty. Passing this resolution and continuing to take further action steps isn't just about rectifying the very real and awful depreavations that trans people are facing right now with their legal rights. It sends a direly needed message that as a community, we value trans lives and well-being, and we are committed to protecting trans lives and well-being without half measures or apology. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and city you're from.
Hi, my name is Vivian Olson. I'm from Iowa City. This is actually my third time living in Iowa City. I went here for undergrad, popped around for work, popped back because I love Iowa City, popped around for work. And finally, I began working remotely, and I had an opportunity to move anywhere that I wanted. I was living in Denver at the time, a well-known blue state with fairly solid state protections. I came back to this area because I was visiting my folks, and I had the intent to move to Chicago. And then I came back into contact with the community here. I want to say thank you to Dr. Emma Denny. I want to say thank you to Storm and Iowa Trans Mutual Aid for all that they do. I want to say thank you to every trans person that is here, digging their teeth into their lips, just in a place that they love. I'm here for the long haul, just like the rest of you. And motions like this that come out of a community like that, sort of to highlight just how valuable it is to have community members who are willing to fight like you are all fighting. And it highlights the intelligence that this, that this city has to tap into for movements moving forward, as highlighted by Dr. Emma Denny's statements here. I would encourage the council to continue to tap into these community resources. And obviously, pass this one tonight, but to continue to lean on the expertise of community that knows its own problems, not only the trans community, but other communities, like the trans community that are under attack currently. Once again, thank you so much to the queer community, to the queer elders who have been through this time and time again. And thank you, Iowa City. I love you. I yield my tongue.
Thank you. I see our last speaker here. I want to make sure that everyone has spoken that wanted to speak. Any more hands? Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Danielle Crawford. I am a resident of Iowa City. I have lived here since the summer of 1994. That makes this 31 years for me living in the city of Iowa City. I'm 54 years old. I'll be 55 this fall, and I think that makes me elder to some of you as well. What that also means though, is that I did not come out as trans until 2020. I lived the majority of my life in a closeted fashion. And while this isn't about my story, I add that because one never knows one's true self until you meet it. And so one of the things about being trans or being queer or identifying as somebody who's an activist, these things come to you at different times in your life. And paying attention to that inner voice and the voice of people in your community is vital. I run a trans support group here in town that supports trans and gender non-conforming people. And I have seen an increase in membership, largely because people are scared, they're frightened, they're alone. They realize that Iowa City has the community that you're seeing here tonight. It's vibrant and wonderful, and people, we're, it's, it's a resource for all sorts of things that are at the, in the city. But my point is, we have a greater growing need. I'm receiving calls from people from all over Iowa saying, what resources do you have that you might be able to extend to us? Because we live in smaller towns in Iowa, they do not have these supports, we do not have this advocacy, we don't have what you've described all over tonight as a Iowa City lifestyle, as the reasons why people want to live here in this town. These things are vital for what it makes, it makes us who we are. We're people that were first back in the 1960s and 70s fighting for civil rights because the students stood up and said, no, we don't want to deal with a racist Vietnam War. We have people who are moving forward now on the issues of being trans, on gender equality, on all sorts of these things. And I appreciate that the, everything that the TAC has done, I appreciate the, and support the measures that Dr. Emma Denny has suggested, because these are valuable suggestions for moving forward. And I just want to say, I also work at the University of Iowa, and I, we work on grants for NASA, and we are seeing how the threats of the federal government are shutting down access to things that make Iowa and Iowa City vibrant. So we have to fight, and the challenge is in your court. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then, yep, you were in the hall. This will be our last speaker. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Izzy from Iowa City, and I'll keep it short, and I did last call already. But a quick anecdote, I was like outside of my house, just like gardening the other day, like pulling weeds in the driveway. I heard someone driving past our house yelling like out their windows seemingly, like, F you, homophobic slur. And I didn't really think much of it. And I turned towards like our, like, street, and like drove past me, and there was like some kid in like the passenger window of like an F-150 or something, looked like 17, 18 or something. And his window's down, he looks at me, he's like, kind of like caught off guard then, like outside the house, and he's like, dude, take it up the butt? Like, like, obviously, he's like not expecting to see someone who wanted to yell at a house. And I expect you guys to have a common criticism with this motion in the repercussion from the state government. I invite you to kind of see them as some kid in F-150. They, they have empty words that they'll throw at you, but I don't, I think it's all bark. I invite you to stand up to them and protect your residents. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody for their comments at this. Now we're going to move on to the council discussion.
I'll just start because I'll be probably the most brief. But I just want to, I've got such a mishmash of notes and thoughts, and it's very hard to articulate them all, but it really boils down to this. First, I wish I could quote each and every one of you who spoke, because you are so much more articulate and meaningful than anything that I can say. So I, each and every one of you has, you know, used your words to lift up our courage as well as your own. And so I just simply want to say thank you for your work, your advocacy, action, heart, tears. And you're right, I've heard it several times about, this is vital. And I'm incredibly proud to stand behind this work that you have done and that counselors have brought and furthered, and that we did it with alacrity. And yet, it all took the hard, hard work of what came before to, to get it through the county. The only thing I wanted to, to mention a little bit, it resonated for me, is that I have a middle schooler, and they get it. I mean, middle schoolers, plural, right? So just, they get it. My daughter comes home and she's like, she watches, she reads, she sees what's going on. And she's like, I literally do not understand what is wrong with people. People have, just want to live. People want to be safe, and they want to live full lives. Why is that an issue? And I'm like, the kids get it, right? That's the thing that gives me hope, and it gives me strength right here, right now, along from drawing from you guys, so I just, you all. So I just want to say thank you very much, and I will be very, very proudly and happily and humbly pushing this forward.
Again, wanted to echo the thanks to everybody that worked on this resolution, that spent their time over the last year working on this and bringing us this tonight. It's, it's great. Going to be very happy to support it. One of the things too, that struck me, I have lots of thoughts about this, but that struck me tonight, listening to everybody speaking tonight, is this reminded me why I got into politics in the first place. When I came back to Iowa in 2010 to go to grad school, it was on the heels of the 2009 Varnum decision, where Iowa became the third state in the nation to have same-sex marriage. Awesome time. This was good for a member of my family, who got to marry her wife, and they're wonderfully still together today. But what I saw right after I came back here in 2010 was something much, much uglier, and that was Terry Branstad and his Lieutenant Governor, Kim Reynolds, who inflamed and exploited anti-gay hatred in order to get into Terrace Hill and become the governor of this state. And they have continued to go down that path. And as more people realized that same-sex marriage, geez, the state didn't end, it was fine, they switched their targets to trans people. And it has been gross and awful to watch. And so that's why, back in 2010, after coming here, I started knocking doors. I started working on campaigns and for candidates. And thank you, Mr. Abu Isa, because you actually reminded me of another really important part of that journey, and that's when I came back, I was registered as an independent. And so I started really paying attention to things like, exactly like those party platforms, and looking at the two different parties here. And that's one of the, between that and the environment and a couple of other issues, that's why I became a Democrat and started knocking for those candidates, and knocking, and showing up, and running other people's campaigns, and doing all of that. And so this reminds me of why I did it in the first place. And I'm going to throw out one other thing, and, and another call to action, as we call each other to action in this moment. A year from now, we're going to know who's running for governor against Kim, or whoever was going to be running for the Republican seat, since Reynolds says she's not running again. We're going to have an opportunity to actually make this state more sane on this issue and so many other important issues. If anybody out there, you know, as we get a year from now, there's other races in the State House and the State Senate, the US Congress. If anybody out there is like me and just willing to put in that time and effort and knock doors, reach out to me. I'll help hook you up to, to somebody, a candidate that you can support, not just here in Iowa City, but around the state, because that's important too. So with that little call to action, again, I am so happy that this is before us and very happy to support it.
I sort of spoke earlier, and I won't reiterate who I said thanks to, but thanks to everyone, including the people who wrote our ordinance years and years and years ago with all that foresight. So that actually also gives me hope that like this, there's this long, long history in Iowa City of people who care and love their neighbors. And I'm all, I'm happy you're all here. I appreciate all of your words, appreciate the music that you make, appreciate the words that you make, and I hope you all stay here.
Oh, I just want to add one last thing. There was a comment earlier that gave credit to Dr. Denny, but also they mentioned Sean by first name, but they meant Sean McRoberts, not me, Sean. I don't want to take anybody else's credit. Thank you. Thank you for your wonderful work on this.
This, you know, means a lot to me, as a lot of you probably know, I'm kind of considered like the token cis person in the friend group, you know? So, being around trans, intersex, non-binary people, what have you, you know, it's just been my life for so long, making music in Iowa City punk scene, Cedar Falls punk scene, and it does break my heart, like, very deep down to the core, when I see so many like friends that I've met and played music with, just not only suffering, but moving and feeling like they have to flee for their lives, basically, flee for dignity, you know? And I'm never going to try to tell anybody who's in that situation that I'm not in what to do. But what I will say is, when it comes to resiliency and solidarity, like, I mean, look no further than the Iowa City trans community, that's what I'm going to tell you, you know? Solidarity is like, who, you know, when, you know, a homeless encampment catches on fire, you know, who's immediately there to help clean up? Who's immediately there to fundraise, to book the show, to gather the resources to drive it over there? You know, it's largely the trans community, in my experience. Who always shows up to the Palestinian solidarity protests? It's the trans community. Who always shows up for immigrants? It's the trans community. And that goes for the immigrant community as well, that goes for the Palestinian community as well, because people like this know that you have to stand together when you're facing this insane adversity. And something like this, you know, within, it started in the punk scene, but I think it's kind of going out to normie territory now. It's just like the phrase, you know, I used to think it was cringe, but no, I kind of like it, of Iowa City world city, you know? And I think that, I think it's very, you know, Iowa City world city, it's a place that's completely unlike anything else in the most positive way possible. Like, we are a small city in the state of Iowa that just has so much culture and so much to offer, and such a diverse, vibrant, amazing community. And people come here all the time from like New York City, from, you know, I'll book some bands here, and they say, "This place is, I wish my hometown was like this," and their hometown is like Chicago, you know? Their hometown is New York City, their hometown is San Francisco. Somebody even told me that Iowa City's gayer than San Francisco. I don't know about that, but, you know, when it comes to these things, you know, I wholeheartedly agree with a lot of the things that commentators have said, which is that, you know, that there's, you know, an understandable fear when trying to make a stand in a hostile place like this, not even a hostile state, but hostile federal government, you know, what's going to happen? And so I don't blame anybody for feeling those fears, but I just think, like, if you look, if you look to history, if you look, no amount of putting your head in the sand is going to protect you, right? You need to make bold, bold statements, not just bold statements, but bold actions, and you need to be willing to fight for the people that live in your community, whether that be legal battles, whether that be passing resolutions that you know might get challenged. You need to get in the fight and not just stay away from it, because there's always a chance you can win, and there's always a way that you can pick yourself back up and go back to the drawing board and keep fighting instead of just giving up. So, I do just want to say thank you so much again to, you know, Councilor Mo, Mayor Teague, Councilor Burgess. I wish I could have been on those meetings, but open meetings laws prevented it, so. But it's, you know, just thank you so much, thank you so much to the TAC, thank you to the county for passing it. I would love to see other localities in the area like North Liberty and Coralville go down the same path. You know, and it's really important for the city to do something like this, like I said, but I think that people need to also continue to do the things that you're doing in terms of doing it yourself. You don't need to listen to what city councilors tell you to do, you can just, if you don't like what we say, then just do it yourself some way, you know? And same thing about not letting some weird freaks in the state, you know, tell you that you're not a person, you know, that your rights, that you don't have rights, that you're less of a person than they are, because they're going to ultimately be the losers in history, and y'all are always going to be here, and Iowa City is always going to be this magical place that I love. So, yeah, thank you so much to everybody.
I already had the chance to say some things, so very, very briefly, incredible gratitude for everyone who has done so much work, not just over the last year and not just being here tonight, but I think, Megan, you spoke to courage, and I keep trying to put myself in folks' shoes and imagine what it would take to be as brave as the people who are here and all the people who are just living lives with what we're facing right now. And the thing I want to just highlight is, one of the action items in this is for us, the city council shall, this is mandatory, you guys, encourage elected and appointed officials, elected leaders and appointed officials of other cities and counties throughout Iowa to use their legislative and administrative authority to take any and all actions as may be necessary to protect LGBTQ plus individuals from discrimination and enshrine such protections into law. And right now, every single city in Iowa could do this. Every single city in Iowa could do this, and there are no excuses for leaving our neighbors behind. Thank you.
I think, Paris, I would like to, okay, everyone said that's a lot of good things, and I cannot say it better. So, for me, it is very simple. Every person in Iowa City deserves to feel safe, respected, and protected regardless of who they are. When rights are stripped from one group, it threatens the safety and the dignity of all of us. This resolution reaffirms our values as a city and send a clear message that Iowa City is standing on the side of equity, justice, and human rights. Definitely voting yes for this. Thanks.
Well, you know, it's been a lot said tonight, and I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, this does mean a lot, not only for our city, we heard folks mention our youth, I think this means a lot for them as well. Iowa City has long stood for human rights in so many various ways, and when it comes down to the diversity of this community in this room, we look very diverse in so many ways. And that's one thing that I heard ringing out through the comments today about what makes Iowa City feels like a special place for people. And that's something that we want to make sure that we continue to maintain here in this city. Our Human Rights Commission, they have a lot of opportunity to continue to do the work that they already have been asked to do, and I think that's another reason why we're here today, is to publicly announce what the Human Rights Commission can do here in this community to really protect our trans community and all folks. And that is another reason why the resolution is here. There was one thing that was pointed out, is that we want to make sure that folks know and that this isn't hidden, I think that's what Dr. Emma said during their remarks. You wanted to make sure that folks knew and that it wasn't buried. Also want to just talk about, a little bit about the folks that brought this to us, because before we take this vote, I think it's important that we had folks that are trans, you know, here really fighting for their lives is what's happening, and asking us to do something as a city. So I want to absolutely thank Dr. Emma once again, absolutely, awesome and amazing. And then we have in the back, you got to wave your hand, Reverend Sean McRoberts, thank you for all the work that you've done, and for all the commissioners that were at the Johnson County doing all the work. Can we give them a huge round of applause? We're here today, we're here today because of your long journey at, you know, creating this resolution with the county, and then now here. We are tasked, as Councilor Burgess mentioned, to really spread the word, and that is something that I'm looking forward to doing and talking to other folks throughout our state, because it is important. And I think that one community can make a big difference. And so I really want to just, again, say thanks to everybody for being here, thanks for my fellow councilors. This is an easy decision, I believe, for all of us, because we really do hate what's happening in our state. It is not right. When I first came to Iowa City, I actually beat you, Danielle, because I came in 1993. Yes, so I beat you by one year. I also have to acknowledge that nobody got the ding dong, everybody stayed under their timeframe. I was actually a little worried that I was going to have to say thank you, thank you to you, to cut you off, but thanks to everybody for really allowing everybody to come that wanted to speak tonight. But Iowa City, again, when I came at the age of 17, I was closeted myself, but there was something that I read about per capita, how Iowa City was a good gay place to be, and so me being this kind of halfway closeted, only out in my, you know, comfortable circles, because I was a church kid, still a church kid, but to see where it was in 1993 to where it is today, one of the greatest joys I have is going to the schools and speaking with our young folks, because they don't give a damn what people are, they don't give, they really don't care, they have no, when I talk to them about anything related to the LGBTQ plus, they're like, "Go for it." I mean, so what we're seeing is our youth, they get it, who don't get it is our state. And I think that we have to continue to fight as a community, there's so many things on the docket that we're experiencing nationally and statewide, and I think together, we're going to continue to work to change some of those laws, because local, really, what folks want locally is important, but we're talking about human rights, and that is just a no-deal from the beginning. So thanks to everybody for coming, and I think we are ready to take a vote. So, here we go.
Teague.
Yes.
Wyline.
Yes.
Alter.
Yes.
Burgess.
Yes.
Harmsen.
Yes.
Mo.
Yes.
Sala.
Yes.
And thanks again for all of you that came for this item. Yes. All right, and we're going to move on to item number 11, which is council appointments, 11A, has community police review board. There is one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment through June 30th, 2027, but can I get a motion to defer indefinitely?
So moved, Alter.
Second.
Mo.
Yes, and I just want to make a statement that, you know, this is being really requested to be indefinitely deferred due to the Cinefile 311, and then item number 10F, ordinance dissolving the board that we discussed earlier tonight, and that this was a staff request to defer this. So, any other discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. We're on to item number 12, announcements of vacancies previous, 12A. We have the Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a new member position upon appointment through April 4th, 2027. Civil Service Commission, one vacancy to fill a new member position upon appointment through April 1st. Housing and Community Development Commission, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Library Board of Trustees, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill a five-year term. Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a six-year term. Board of Appeals, HVAC professional, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term. Historic Preservation Commission, Brown Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Jefferson Street, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Historic Preservation Commission, Woolon Avenue, one vacancy to fill a three-year term. Vacancies will remain open until filled. We're at item number 13, which is city council information.
Councilor Wyline and I held a listening post, was it Justice Pat? No.
Two weekends ago.
Yeah, two Saturdays ago. It was interesting to sort of just sit there and have people come up and talk to us. Had a good conversation with a woman who wanted to know about the Burlington Street Bridge project, and was interested in the fact of like trying to actually get the river more vibrant and, you know, have more things, although we did point out that there was the difficulty of all the infrastructure that was underneath. So, she was really interested that the conversations are happening, so, one thing I thought I'd mention, and...
There was one other gentleman who was concerned about, wanted us to make sure that staff were going to keep the 21 South Lynn project to lead standards.
That's right.
Even though it's not technically in the agreement, but just was like worried about, since it's not technically in the agreement, that we won't put...
Accountability?
Just worried about accountability with that, that was another conversation we had.
I just wanted to welcome back all the University of Iowa students. Classes are starting soon. Classes also starting soon for the Iowa City School District, coming up a week from yesterday. I know my son is enjoying his last few days of freedom before having to get back into the routine of the school year, so good luck to all of those folks. A little note for my fellow Eastsiders, and also for those of us who have students who go to City High, just a reminder that there's some major road construction close by there, so both along Court Street, and I know they're working on and trying to get finished up some other sorts of repairs in some of the side streets there to the north and west of City High. So, best advice I could give, and I've already started harping on my son about this, so fellow parents, you can understand how that goes, leave 15, 20 minutes earlier than you think you need to. Don't try and rush and beat it to the finish line, because it's going to be, especially until people get used to it, it's going to take extra time, so give yourself extra time and be safe.
Great. All right, we're going to move on to item number 14, report on items from our city staff, city manager's office. City attorney's office.
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right, city clerk? All right. Item number 15, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Sala, second to by Wyline. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero, we are adjourned. We are adjourned.